Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Bobby Dyer.
Wow. You guys can come more often. So, welcome to the December 12th regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Robert Kaplan. And Robert is a junior at Lyman High School where he is academically ranked in the top 2% of his class. He is very active in the band where he is a section leader in a TRIM music honor. He's in the TRIM Music Honor Society as well as the National Honor Society, Interact, and the Jewish Student Union. Robert joined scouting scout pack 641 as a first grader and has progressed through the ranks and is currently at the rank of Life and Boy Scout Troop 641 and expects to earn Eagle Scout this spring. He's very experienced in leading groups in prayer. In 2010, he gave the closing prayer at the National Meeting of the Boy Scouts of America in front of 1,600 people at the Duty to God Breakfast. He had to stand on a box to reach the microphone. He's also facilitated interface services at many scouting events. He has served his troops as his troop's chaplainade for three years. And he has attended religious school at congregation and today he attends and leads services. So, Robert is doing everything in his power to have a bright future and is planning on getting a degree in economics and political science. And I bet he gets into just about any college that he would like. Will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Hill. After Robert's invocation, he may stand or remain seated.
Thank you. Our Lord, we gather here today in the spirit of goodwill and fellowship and in continuing to seek the brightest path to truth and happiness, charge ourselves and each other with the most cherished duty of loving kindness. Let us always have the heart to stand in another's shoes and treat them with respect, whatever views they may hold. Let us have the mind to choose righteousness. Let us have the courage to never stand idly and indifferent to suffering. Let us never forget that the comfort and joy of friends and fathers and brothers and sisters and mothers and community will always come, not only in the deepest pit of suffering, but also in the brightest of victory and happiness. Baruch HaShem and let us say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Robert. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and determine a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
All right, let's first order of business, consideration of minutes from the workshop of General District City Council meetings of December 5th. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion, indicating so by saying aye. Opposed motion carries. All right, awards, presentations, and recognition. So, the safety of our community and its residents are the number one priority of this commission. And we do that in many different ways, whether it's through OPDs activities or OFD in saving patients, but we're also very proactive about keeping our community safe. And one of the proactive measures that we have taken is Take Heart Orlando, which we started in 2013. We've educated thousands of residents on the ability to recognize and treat sudden cardiac arrest. So, what we are doing, plain and simple, is teaching every resident in the city of Orlando, eventually, hands-only CPR. And the American Heart Association recognizes hands-only CPR as just as effective as mouth-to-mouth because there's a lot of people that aren't interested in giving mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, but they are willing to do hands-only or use the DFib. So, we have started training people. The reason that is important is because for every minute that you are unconscious after you have suffered a cardiac event, for every minute that you do not receive CPR until our EMTs get there, you have a 10% less chance of survival. So, let's say 911 is called and you're out for three minutes, you have a 30% less chance of surviving if somebody around you does not know how to and is not willing to administer CPR. So, we are all about making sure that we are one of the best cities in terms of being able to survive a cardiac event. And so far, I'm pleased to announce, we have trained approximately 80,000 residents in hands-only CPR. So, Chief Williams would like to acknowledge the community leaders that have helped us and made this possible. Chief Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, good afternoon, and distinguished guests. As Mayor stated, the Orlando Fire Department Take Heart CPR program, in partnership with five local fire departments, trained approximately 28,000 students in Orange County Public School System on September 29th. OCPS is the 10th largest school district in the United States and the 4th largest in the state of Florida. This training took place at various high schools in the city, Boone High School, Dr. Phillips, Lake Nona, Edgewater, and Jones. Mayor, I know you said it earlier, how many people we trained, but a year ago you gave me a challenge to train, to get our numbers up from 26 up to 50 by the end of the year. You said it already, but I'm proud to announce that we did train over 52,000 students and people, residents in the city of Orlando this year alone, which got our total up to 80,000, as you said earlier.
Great job, Chief. Sorry I preempted that great announcement. You're getting back.
But I would say would not be possible without a good staff doing it. We came together as a city, but most importantly, we came together as a fire department. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our public information manager, Asha Pagner, who was instrumental in this whole process, and Tracy Ryan, who was a hands-only CPR coordinator for the past two and a half years. She has really taken it to higher heights to allow us to meet our goals. But I'm also sad to announce that Tracy's leaving us. So, as recognition for her accomplishment, we want to acknowledge Tracy for what she's done for the city of Orlando, for the citizens. So, come up for her, Tracy. Chairman Hutchins, to come up and say a couple words.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, distinguished guests, I'd just like to say on behalf of the American Heart Association, how appreciative we are to the city, certainly to the fire department. I know I had trained my own, they trained my own staff before coming out and helping out, and also to Orange County Public Schools to cooperate with this because we, on that one day, did about 28,000 people. So, 70% of cardiac events happen in the home, not in the hospital. And you're right, Mayor, the one minute makes such a difference. So, anybody we can train is really good. So, I just, on behalf of the American Heart Association, say thank you for the great partnership.
As I stated earlier, we had five high schools in the city of Lone that participated in this event, and I just want to acknowledge those high schools and their representatives today. First and foremost, Jones High School Principal Rodrick Walden is present?
Yeah, he's here.
Have you come down? Our next school is Boone High School, which trained 860 students, and that is Principal Dusty Jones and Health Academy Program Coordinator Elizabeth Smith and Amy Parker, if you're here? Our third school is Edgewater High School, which trained 885 students, and the representative is Principal Marks Shinnaw. That's pronounced correct. Yeah. Our next school is Lake Nona High School, which trained 1,025 students, and the representative is Assistant Principal Jennifer Fugay. Last and certainly not least is Dr. Phillips High School, which trained 1,500 students, and the coach, Robertson, is here to separate the warfare.
And to close out this part, I'd want to thank Orange County Public Schools, the School Board, and Superintendent and the Chairman, Chairman Sublet, for adopting a policy that requires all of the high school students to have hands-only CPR training. Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to the Mayor's Update, and we have a somewhat lengthy meeting today, or we anticipate a somewhat lengthy meeting in any event. So, the Commissioners and I have all culled down our remarks a little bit, so I am going to do the ones that are necessary, I suppose, and they're going to do likewise, and we'll catch up after the New Year on some of the other things. Okay, one thing that is important, though, is that I would like to take a moment and wish Commissioner Ings a happy birthday. His birthday is tomorrow. Seems like we've had every Commissioner in the last three months have their birthday. So, Commissioner Ings, would you like us to sing to you? I think we will. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Commissioner Ings, happy birthday to you. It's tough having that December birthday. June's going to double up and just give you just a single gift this year, I think.
I don't think so.
Okay, today is June, or December 12th, so it is six months from what was, without question, the darkest day in our city's history. But I am so proud of our community and how we have responded. I've learned a lot since then about how communities respond in the face of tragedy and adversity, and especially terrorism, and the normal response is fear, anger, and hatred. And instead of any of those emotions, our community responded with love and compassion and unity. And it's a tribute to who we are as a community, it's a tribute to the fact that we embrace diversity and equality, and we didn't have to learn about it on June the 12th. We were living that a long time prior to the June the 12th. Tonight, we will be having a ceremony at History Center at 5:30, assuming that we're out of here by then, but also Barbara and Rosario are opening up the exterior of the Pulse nightclub after that event for anybody that would like to attend a vigil there. So, I invite you to participate in either or both of those. On today's agenda, we have the extension, or really a long-term contract with United Way to manage our Orlando United Assistance Center, and that has been in operation. We opened the Family Assistance Center two days after Pulse and have had it transition into a more permanent status, which was initially, for the first few weeks, staffed with city staff, and then United Way took over the leadership there. And we are so thankful that we have an organization like United Way that can provide these services because these are longtime services. There are people that certainly that died that night, people with physical injuries, people with emotional injuries that will need care of one sort or another for a very long time, and we don't ever want to think that we would abandon them in whatever needs they have. So, Bob Brown, who is the retiring CEO, and Jeffrey Hayward, he was the new CEO, are with us here today, along with, I think, some other members of your board or staff. So, would you all stand and please be recognized? And then also, I would like to recognize Commissioner Sheehan, who is a finalist for the Orlando Sentinel Central Floridian of the Year, is nominated by members of our community, and certainly, I think, it's our tireless efforts in helping to lead our community through the aftermath of this tragic event. So, congratulations to Commissioner Sheehan on that. Okay, and I just want to talk about two items on the agenda very quickly. I noted at Agenda Review that the city clerk has neatly ordered your agenda today. We have a number of items that relate to the Paramore Oaks Project, and they are all in a quasi-judicial hearing that we're going to have. They are all after either, well, they begin on second read, number three, and they are all the items after that. So, we will conduct all of the business that we have to conduct other than that, and then we will finish our meeting with that. I am assuming that a lot of the people that are in the room today are here because they are a recipient of a Mayor's Matching Grant. So, if you or your organization is a recipient of a Mayor's Matching Grant, would you please stand and be recognized? We want to thank all of you for your efforts. The Matching Grant, you have to contribute either matching funds or, in most cases, matching in-kind services for great events. It's a very highly competitive process, and if you've made it through, it means you have a very deserving project. So, we thank you for what you're doing in our community. Okay, that brings us to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment on items from the Consent Agenda and also update you on items that are important for their districts. By agreement, they're going to somewhat curtail their remarks, so if you were hoping that they, Commissioner Ings, for instance, might give you 20 minutes worth of remarks, he's probably not going to today. But we will begin with Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I am going to condense mine also. I just have two major things that I would like to speak on. The first will be on the Paramore Oaks. Everyone knows how passionate I am about housing in Paramore and how needed it is because of the inadequate housing situation there and lack thereof. So, after the Mayor introduces the quasi-judicial hearing, I am going to recuse myself because I do believe this should be a fair and impartial hearing, and I respect those that oppose this project, and I do believe in the judicial process. And because of that, Mayor and Commissioners, before we proceed to the quasi-judicial hearing, you'll remember that at our meeting last week, I underscored the general importance of new and equal housing opportunities for the people of Paramore. While that is still my view, I believe that I could adjudicate the merits of this quasi-judicial hearing and with my view. I want all of you all to go in and the community to have an open mind. I want to ensure that all sides feel that they are getting a fair hearing. I will abstain my voting and participating only, only, in the quasi-judicial hearing. And I'm hoping that you would decide to approve the zoning application and also the PD ordinance. The young man, Robert, did say something earlier in his prayer, and it says, "Let all of us stand in another's shoes and consider their suffering." Consider their suffering. Not going to say much on that. I will have something to say later about the suffering. The second thing I want to say is, just like veteran housing was first, I think, safety, for us to have a safe environment, adequate housing is first. We've had a rash of murders all the way up until tonight, last evening. This time, it's trickled down to not just District 5 and District 6, it's now in District 3, Commissioner Stewart's district. Five was shot, one's dead, another died a quarter mile away, got shot in the neck and died yesterday, two murders. A week, not even five days ago, a young lady at a gas station, innocent bystander, killed. Last night, they were just coming out, a 15-year-old coming out of a store, 7-Eleven over in Rosemont. We have to do something. I've done praying, I've done singing, marches, had community forums. Not saying it's not working, but I think we have some extreme times right now in the city of Orlando, extreme conditions. I've been informed and told that kids that's less than 10 years old are carrying high-powered rifles and guns. I'm asking the community to stand up. If you see something, say something. I'm asking those that have corporations, when I'm asking these kids to put down their guns, not taking away from any other organization that we've helped, but we start pouring resources into these youth that we need to give training. I'm also going to be asking, meeting with each Commissioner and the Mayor, to ask that we put metal detectors in our community centers. Our community centers are going to have to be the safe haven now for our children because the streets aren't safe right now anymore. Going to be asking, because the community is asking me this, about a curfew for children under 18 years old. I know it sounds radical and it sounds extreme, but we do need to know where our children at and what they're carrying. So, I also will be meeting with, I've been meeting with the old heads, when we say the pastors and community leaders. Now, I think it's, we're going to have to go and meet with the gang members. We're going to have to go meet with those that are carrying the guns and see what more can we do. So, Mayor, with that, I say keep our city in prayer, keep our youth in prayer. I know it's not a great report, but I do know if we come together, that we'll have a better report this time next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ings?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you for everybody here on the council and also in the audience that's saying happy birthday to me. It really means a lot for all of us when our birthdays do come because we have so much to be thankful for. And I am just, as I was walking up the stairs today, just thinking about the tenure and the time that I've been here on city council, how thankful I am that I'm able to serve here and seeing so many different opportunities. And this is why I appreciate the nonprofits that are here receiving the Mayor's Matching Grants because you do so much in our community to foster and protect our young people and our seniors and all of our residents within our community. So, I just want to say thank you to you, all of the recipients, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. One item on the agenda I'd like to acknowledge is Item C6 and 7, and that is an investment credit for a potential move from KPMG here to the city of Orlando. And I've said it before, anybody that considers investing capital in our city deserves our thank you. So, I'd like to acknowledge the two gentlemen, if you'd be so kind to please stand and take our applause for considering moving what could be up to 50,000 employees a year here to Orlando, the Lake Nona region, for training and development. Thank you. At the end of the day, our estimation is more than $400 million. They will be investing if they choose to come to Orlando. So, I'm going to go ahead and vote and hope you come. So, thank you very much, gentlemen, for joining us today. Happy holidays. That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Commissioner, if we want, if you want, we can all come together and serenade them during Christmas to see if they'll come over. We'll be more than glad to do that. Thank you, Mayor. This week, we had the honor of graduating another group from District 2 Government Academy, where constituents learn about all the different levels of government. I want to thank each of the resources that have supported this initiative for the past three years. I also want to congratulate this magnificent group of people, of students who, from now on, will be given the task of transmitting the knowledge they have acquired to other citizens in our communities. One of the recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grant is the Early Learning Coalition of Orange County. They're here with us today. Want to recognize Ms. Melissa, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrina, is that right? Patrina, okay. Victoria Namor, Cindy Jure, Karen Willis, and Jerry Brady. The hard work and dedication have resulted in hundreds of preschool children served around the city of Orlando for over five years. Preschool ambassadors, they aim at enhancing voluntary pre-kindergarten programs. Preschool ambassadors, they aim at enhancing voluntary pre-kindergarten programs by promoting reading and educating parents of VPK children on best practices to support early literacy learning at home. Thanks to this grant, they'll be able to serve more children and families throughout an entire year through structured training and age-appropriate materials that will be provided to them, especially those in predominant Spanish-speaking sectors of the city. So they have more opportunities to have a more successful academic future. Congratulations and please know that your efforts and strong commitment towards our children are greatly appreciated. If you can stand up one more time, to give you a round of applause. And finally, I want to echo the words of the mayor. I'd like to take a moment to remember the victims of the Pulse tragedy. Today marks the sixth month since that tragic night and because of this, this holiday season has a different meaning. And I'd like to share a quote from Pope Francis. He says, "May the Almighty grant us the untiring desire to promote peace." Please let's continue to have the victims and their families in our thoughts and prayers, especially during this holiday season and to all, Merry Christmas." That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. And let me share a couple of things. First of all, I would echo the comments about the Pulse and while I, I'm looking forward to spending time with the community today to reemphasize our efforts to another to make our community even better than what it is. So, a couple of quick things. Let me say, I'm not going to get a chance to do this very often, but let me say thank you to Bob Brown. Bob, thank you for 10 years of your service and what you've done with the Heart of Florida United Way. We are honored that you have accomplished that task and you're my friend and you've been a wonderful community servant. I want to say thank you very much. So let's all give him a round of applause. Regina, thank you for your comments and I look forward to working with you on that. That area over there is a difficult area to deal with and looking forward to everybody who will help out to make that safer for our entire community. And then last, Mayor, I just want to make a couple of quick comments on the mayor's matching grant and recognize some of these that I think are important, the Kids' Fringe and the After School All-Stars, especially the Lake Orlando Homeless Association for their wall painting project. Congratulations to you. And of course, the work that Orlando Ballet is doing, that's, those are those that affect my district and I'm very honored to support the mayor's matching grant. We see an incredible impact with a, I'd say relatively small investment, but we multiply that through our local communities and I appreciate us continuing to do that. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move to Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And six months ago, last night actually, a homophobe came into a gay club, a Latinite, and opened fire on young people dancing. They were dancing. They were enjoying one another's company. They were having a fun time together and he decided to shoot them and kill them. And this, of course, has had a tremendous impact on the LGBT community, the Latin community, Hispanic community, we've worked very closely together. And what a lot of folks don't realize that, you know, city employees left their desks for months to work and help people. The Assistance Center has been working since day one to assist people and I just want to thank everyone here today, from the bottom of my heart, immigration services, mental health services, housing and rental assistance. These young people lost their jobs. A lot of times, they lost their housing because they lost their jobs. They couldn't get their cars, so they lost their jobs. There were a lot of things that happened and because of you, they have hope. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you did and what we'll continue to do to help them. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner?
I'm okay. I'm done.
Consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're going to take about a 30-second break because there are a lot of people that should be smiling right now. They've just had their items passed on the consent agenda and if you would like to take an exit, early exit from this meeting, you are certainly welcome to do that. No, no.
Yes, I'm emotional.
Okay, anybody that's not staying for the rest of the meeting, if you could take your conversations out to the rotunda, that would be fantastic. Okay, so we have approved the consent agenda. And we're going to go to ordinances on first reading number one. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2016-98, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the downtown south neighborhood improvement district, amending section 40.16 Orlando City Code to ease eligibility for membership on the district's advisory council, amending section 40.17 Orlando City Code to clarify the district's authority to hire consultants and employees, providing legislative findings and for severability codification, correction of scrupulous errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Enges. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing not in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Hearings, ordinances, first read number one.
Ordinance 2016-87, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the operation of unmanned aircraft systems, amending Chapter Five, Section 5.19, Part Two, Chapter 43, Section 43.02 of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrupulous errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Enges, second by Commissioner Stewart. All right, I want to have most of the discussion on this item at the second read, but I do have five people that would like to speak on this item, so I'd like to have staff do a quick presentation so that we have an idea of what's contained in the ordinance.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners. I'll be brief because I know it's, you guys got a long meeting ahead of you. Basically, came to our attention at Orlando Police Department that our officers were out in the city, they would see someone flying a drone, they would have concerns about whether it was being operated in a safe manner and it was not clear exactly what they could or couldn't do. Superimposed upon this issue was the fact that we do currently have an ordinance on the books which prohibits anyone from flying a drone anywhere in the city of Orlando without a permit. The permit that that person would get nowadays is the same permit you would get if you were going to fly a helicopter and land it on top of the Amway Center. It's a pretty onerous permit and so what was happening was we were getting calls from commercial entities that wanted to use drones within the city of Orlando and they were concerned about their ability to get a permit and so they were not coming to the city of Orlando to conduct business because they couldn't get a permit for their commercial or their movie shoot or whatever it was. So with these two issues kind of confronting us, we came up with this idea to come up with an ordinance that specifically relates to unmanned aircraft systems being flown in the city of Orlando. It's got two sections. One is a permitting section which controls areas within the city of Orlando where someone can fly a drone and it basically relates to city property. So we're going to talk about parks, venues, those types of areas. That's the permitting process or the permitting aspect of this ordinance. The other section, which applies to everyone, relates to how you're going to fly the drone. So believe it or not, you cannot fly a drone with a weapon on it, no drunk drone flying. We're not going to let you fly in a reckless or dangerous manner. These restrictions apply to anyone. With regard to the permitting, if someone is authorized by the FAA, if they have a permit or authorization, then this ordinance with regard to where they can and can't fly doesn't apply because we believe if the FAA has said, "Yes, you're okay to fly in these areas at this time," then that's good enough for the city of Orlando, for the Orlando Police Department. Those people still will be required to abide by those other reckless flying rules and We've done extensive research. We sent the draft ordinance to the FAA. They reviewed it. We made changes based on their comments. We're not regulating airspace, we're regulating where someone can use a drone in the city of Orlando. We're well within our rights to do that and this is an appropriate ordinance for the city of Orlando to enact, to address those issues that kind of came up.
Questions, Austin? Commissioner Ortiz?
I just want to say that primarily this is for safety reasons. At the end of the day, it's all about safety, safety, safety and we cannot stress that enough. And I think it's something, we didn't have anything on the books, so it is good we're moving forward. And I believe once, as you, as it was explained to me before, once some of the people that had doubts about what we were doing here, met with our staff, with you, there were a lot more out of ease with our ordinance. So I think that would do for us. In the future, we always can turn around and whatever needs to be tweaked, you know, that's the beauty of all the law, it can be amended. So, that's it, Mayor.
So it's accurate to say we're not trying to preempt the FAA's regulation of airspace, but we are trying to make sure that it is possible to legally fly drones within the city of Orlando in a safe manner and to regulate that. And I think the chief said it best, I heard him the other day, say, "We're not trying to preempt FAA at all, but when there's a problem with a drone, people are probably going to call OPD and get a response versus the FAA." And if they do call the FAA, it's not likely they are going to get an immediate response that they would get from the OPD.
That's correct. And we want to have all the rules and regulations in a nice, clean ordinance for our officers to then enforce if that situation were to come up.
All right. Thank you, Austin. All right, we do have five requests for appearance on this item, so I would like you to come to the microphone and give your name and address and then you'll have five minutes. So David Daniel, Mark... And then Abel Alamam, something like that, right? Okay, let's start with David.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is David Daniel. I represent the UAS Association of Florida. We are based out of Tallahassee, Florida. So I drove down here today. We appreciate the opportunity to address the commission today on this issue. Members, I'm a father of six. I have six boys and Saturday in Tallahassee is soccer for me and so I'm out at the soccer fields and I'm teaching my son, who is just starting to play, how he's got to stay within this boundaries of the goal and if you don't, they're going to score on you. And of course, he goes outside of the boundaries, it's his first time playing and he gets scored on and I say again to him, you know, "Come on, you got to stay within that area." And he gets scored on again and it's unfortunate to him, but it's an unforced error, I think, that he heard the direction, he heard my instruction and he said, "Oh, Dad, I've got my own way, I'm going to do that." And that's what I worry about with this ordinance that is before us today. It is an unforced error that will unnecessarily hinder growth and development of the drone business in Orlando. It creates confusion amongst operators and bluntly, I think it sends a signal that Orlando is not friendly to legal drone operations. I do want to take the time to thank the Orlando Police Department. They were very, very generous. Austin was very generous with his time to walk through what they were doing and why they were doing it and so it was important for me to recognize that. You know, often when I look at laws and ordinances, I have to start by saying, "What problem are we trying to solve?" I think that helps make sure that any solution is tailored to the problem and actually solves that problem without the need for unnecessary regulation. We're unsure frankly, what this problem, this draft ordinance solves. If the problem is you shouldn't, we don't want drones to fly over people, well, that's already in part FAA, part 107, it's already prohibited by law. If the problem is we don't want people to fly drones under the influence, Florida Statute 860.13 already prohibits that. If the problem is we don't want people to voyeur using drones, 810.14 Florida Statute already prohibits that. If the problem is we don't want people to provide surveillance where people have a reasonable expectation of privacy, Florida Statute 934.50 already prohibits that. I think there's a couple of confusion on a couple of key points that I just wanted to make you aware about. Unmanned aerial systems, drones are aircraft. They're aircraft under federal law, they're aircraft under FAA regulations and they're aircraft under state law. Number two, FAA has a sole authority to regulate the national airspace, including the airspace below 400. The FAA has the authority to prohibit or restrict drone operations in any fixed site facility and a process for you to apply for that so that your airmen know where they can and can't fly. On nuisance, voyeurism, harassment, property damage, reckless endangerment, communities are better served by drone, not by drone-specific laws or ordinances, they're better served by good ordinances. Drones are just a tool. If you don't want, if you want to prohibit voyeurism, you don't outlaw binoculars or a Nikon Canon with a 500-millimeter lens, you outlaw voyeurism and that would be the guiding law. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I know we've got a busy agenda, I just want to wrap up with this. We believe the goal of any ordinance should be clear lines of jurisdictional authority, clear direction of what is and is not allowed, both for the general public, for the commercial-based drone users, and for the recreational users, and guidance to the law enforcement on how to handle these nuisance calls that come. Again, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your time and we serve, offer any assistance that we have as we go forward on this issue.
Thank you, David.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Karamatica. I'm an attorney at Thompson &amp; LaCicero in Tampa and we're here on behalf of WFTV to give some comments on the drone ordinance and I will say, our view on this is sort of evolving as we're talking to city council about this, particularly the representation and we spotted the language as well in the draft ordinance in section 3C about any authorization by the FAA to operate, be it under part 107 of the FAA regulations or a section 333 exemption, which was sort of the precursor to the part 107 commercial operations that the FAA allows. If this ordinance, WFTV would be operating in a commercial fashion like that, so those would be the FAA provisions that apply to us. If this ordinance is truly designed to exempt commercial operators from having to comply, if they're otherwise compliant with the FAA, we think that's a good thing and that's the way to go, to prevent sort of that unnecessary dual layer of regulation. If the FAA is already saying you're good to go, abide by the part 107 or the section 333 safety requirements, we think that's striking the right balance. However, there are a few things that we still are concerned about, particularly there's a section in the ordinance that talks about seizure of drones in the event of any violation of this section and that could be some of the safety restrictions that we would be exempt from, but also some of the voyeurism restrictions. A normal hobby operator, if you seize his drone, maybe that's what you're getting at, but when you're talking about the news media and, you know, we're going to have a camera on there, that's our news gathering footage that you'll also be seizing and that creates some serious First Amendment issues for us, clearly in a situation where if it was determined that a reporter was trespassing on land or something similar, authorities ought to order them off the land, they're not seizing their cameras and seizing their work product. So we think that's a problem with respect to the seizure aspects of the law. We've come to see that the consultation has occurred, that was something that we had written to the council and the mayor about with the FAA, making sure that that had happened because again, we were concerned about... because again, we were concerned about regulating the airspace. The other thing that we're still concerned about is the idea of what constitutes sort of annoyance or harassment for purposes of voyeurism under the law. Clearly, you know, in covering newsworthy events, people may disagree on what's newsworthy and what constitutes harassment. Obviously, you know, we do at times cover controversial topics and people. We don't want this, that anti voyeurism provision to be used as a sword against the media when they're covering newsworthiness, newsworthy issues. So we would propose if there's a way to perhaps draft a recognition in that section that news gathering and the coverage of newsworthy events would not constitute voyeurism or harassment. So then again, then you don't have those issues of perhaps you're in violation of the law, perhaps your drone gets seized and you, you know, some of these things flow into bigger problems. But with, again, with the representation that this ordinance, as far as the operational limitations on where you can fly, would not affect any entity that has part 107 or section 333 exemption where we're happy that the city has been responsive to those types of issues and made that accommodation, but I would urge the commission to consider our other issues with respect to the news gathering materials and the harassment issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Abel Almagra.
Hello, good evening.
Would you pronounce your name properly for me?
Almager. That's how most people say it, but it's okay. So. I've been in Orlando since 2001. I got here right before September 11th, about a week before and I've been living here ever since then. Just so everybody knows, I fly drones. I am, I guess it would be a semi-professional drone pilot, I guess you would call it. This is a typical drone that we use. This is used for racing. This is not the type of drone that you go out there and you can buy a Best Buy or something like that and stick a camera on it and go fly around people. This is what we use. These guys travel between 50 to 80 miles an hour. We have a big racing league in Orlando, started back in 2015 in February of 2015 with three people. Now we have over 250 members. We've been operating by the airport for over a year already, having a monthly races. We get anywhere between 20 to 30 people. We already have gotten permission from the airport, from FAA, to allow us to use that area. But in regards to this law that Orlando is planning on amendment, amending to that specific problem will be adding all these different rules for requiring permits and stuff like that for just general people. Most of the people that get drones and they just want to create memories for themselves and their families. So, you know, limiting hours, locations where you can fly, it will probably discourage a lot of people from buying that type of equipment and use it for, you know, creating memories for themselves, their families. We in Orlando, we are AMA chapter. Several different areas in the central Florida region have already AMA approval. I am myself and registered with the FAA. As a majority of our pilots that fly with us, we encourage them to get the registration, you know, fly legally. So we're all pretty good, law-abiding citizens. We don't really want to cause any issues and these rules that they're planning on amending might cause several problems, like I said earlier, with just general hobby people that don't want to use this stuff for any bad intentions. A little bit of MultiGP is a company that started in Melbourne in 2014 in December. They started with about six members, they have over 11,000 nationwide already. They're AMA accredited, they're recognized by the AMA, which is Aircraft Model Association, Aircraft Model Aeronautics. They have been around for a very long time. They help us when it comes to troubles like this. This is where, they were the ones that contacted me and told me, hey, this is going down in Orlando, you guys should go and speak your voice. These guys, they travel, like I said, they travel between 50, 80 miles per hour. They weigh less than one pound, they're very lightweight. They don't have, they do carry cameras, but they're not really used for seeing anything because we fly really fast and we don't really want to see anybody doing something that they are not supposed to. That's not our objective. Our objective is to have fun and race around. We fly in local parks a lot, so you know, I drive around the city sometimes and find an empty spot when there's not too many people flying around or nobody there. I like to fly in between trees and do flips and rolls and just feel like I'm a bird flying around, really enjoy it. 1970s computers and stuff like that were also considered as, for hobbyists and tinkerers, so you know, for now, this is kind of new. It's a little scary to some people, they tend to want to regulate it a lot, but passing these rules are probably going to cause a lot of, stopping the growth of the people that are going to be buying this stuff, which is, drones is growing a lot. Economics on drones is, shows a positive trend and increase in money, sales, jobs, stuff like that, so type of regulating it that much is probably not going to be a good idea. Allowing us to just, you know, most of the guys that fly are in good habit, they don't want to cause any problems, they'll fly. If the police or something shows up or somebody, you know, is having an issue with them, they usually, we pack up our stuff and we leave, we go somewhere else, but there's nobody, we won't bother anybody else, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edward Amendola. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ortiz?
I was just going to ask, a lot of this technology is so new and there's so many things happening, technology is evolving so fast. I had a question for the gentleman. This competitions or whatever it is that is going on with these drones, which is pretty interesting to me. You said that you go from park to park. There's any specific places where they conduct these competitions? I mean.
No, there, like I said, there's over 250 members in our group that we know of in Orlando. Of course, there's other people that fly the regular bigger drones, you know, that have the cameras and stuff. We normally fly by the airport on Lancaster Road, right behind the Navy Exchange. We've talked to the city of Orlando, we have permission to hold our events there. But yeah, we, like I said, we like to fly through the trees and, you know, obstacles, abandoned buildings or something like that, just to make cool footage that we upload to the internet, which, you know, people see it, companies see it and they say, hey, this is pretty cool, you know? We've had several companies pop up in Orlando that are drone-specific, such as OAS Hobbies and Graves RC, which is one of the local hobby shops they've.
Do you realize, and it's not a rule, the FAA has ruled that you cannot fly these drones about five miles from an airport?
As long as we stay within 400 feet, we're allowed to fly there and we do, we don't fly that high.
Do you have to let them know, right?
They know that we are there, yep.
Exactly.
We've been flying there for over 10 years, they know the aircraft operations, remote control has been going on there forever.
I don't think our rules are that restrictive as not to allow, it's just that we have to safeguard this, you know, people's lives, safety is, as I said, is the number one. And to me, for example, the media, I don't think we're going to be limiting the media at all because I'm pretty sure that if there's an event going on at a place like the arena or something like that, I mean, not the arena, but the citrus or something like that, they can get permission from the sponsors or whoever is doing the event and I'm pretty sure nobody's going to say no. I think it's more so, I think we're more inclined towards the safety issues, you know? It's not to make peoples, especially those aficionados to this particular item, to make their lives impossible, it's just to have parameters. The gentleman was given an example about a soccer, his son playing soccer and he was telling his son that there's, you got to get that ball in the goal right. Well, we have those parameters too, we have to have them in place because otherwise it becomes a little crazy, so I don't think there's any ill intention for us not, I mean, to ban or to keep people from still enjoying those. So, I mean, it's my understanding, it's just that we have some parameters, we have to, we just put it in place, that's it.
Yeah, most of the guys here that fly with us, like I said, we encourage them to follow the FAA rules. We encourage them to become a member of the AMA, which provides insurance and added protection for those pilots. So we're not against, you know, there has to be rules, just like everything else, a drone can be used for something bad and when people use it for something bad, we agree that there should be some rules that are going to keep people from doing bad stuff, so. We're just, I'm just here to, came an example to show what a racing drone looks like, so you know, a lot of people might not know what that looks like, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Edward, now you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So I'm starting a drone photography business, multimedia business, that may require that I go to a property, take a look at the roof, do a live web app X session for a remote buyer of the property who's interested and couldn't make it to the property to see it and things of that nature. But I have to turn down that business if I'm within 500 feet of a park, if the residence is within 500 feet of a park. Is that my understanding? That's something that needs to be a little better defined. Also, the insurance requirements, I'm a startup and I'm just going to ask that moving forward, we apply some reasonableness as to what the insurance limits would need to be so that the average startup guy can afford getting into the industry. I think it's important that we embrace the fact that we're in a new time. Who would have thought 10 years ago, we'd be here today talking about aerial nuisances and aerial potential threats? But we are in a environment where we need to embrace the fact that Orlando Police has reasonable concerns, the council has reasonable concerns, the commission, and we as the individuals. So I encourage you, as we try to find common ground on all of this, to take into account the little guy, but find, take your time on this and find the correct balance with law enforcement too, because they've done a great job for our city and we certainly appreciate all of their concerns. That's basically all I had.
Thank you for your input. Have you had a chance to sit down with Austin?
Not yet.
Since you're here, Austin, why don't you meet with Edward after this and just get any initial input he may have? Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to suggest, Chief, just like we have the Police Citizens Academy, maybe we should have like a small course or something for all these drone aficionados to come over and meet with the police department and learn about the rules on a one-on-one basis, because I think there's a lot of confusion. I don't think this is as harsh as it seems. I'm pretty sure once they find out what this is all about, everybody's going to be okay with this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorai Almager. Very good. Say your name and address for us.
Sorai Almager, Orlando. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm here from the Orlando Roto Racers and also MultiGP. We are a big group here and also MultiGP is known worldwide from the multirotors and drones. So as my husband was explaining, we race drones all over the world and when we were, they were asking about safety. Safety is actually our number one concern when we have new folks coming into the sport or hobby. We teach anyone from the little folks, because we actually recommend the whole family to join into the hobby. We teach them safety, safety is our biggest concern. We teach them how to fly, when to fly, because we do know that there is times when we are not allowed to fly here in Orlando, since Orlando is actually one of the busiest airports. So when it comes to how to fly, we teach them the proper way to fly, how to install things, when to take off things, how to turn on the drones, because we do not want people to get hurt. When it comes to where to fly, since we know that the Orlando Airport, not only do we have the international one, we have the executive one, we know that there are certain perimeters that we are not allowed to fly. So we teach our members how to fly, where to fly, because we don't want our members to get in trouble and not to set an example, a bad example for our club, because we want our sport to grow, not to hinder the sport. Since we work with AMA, we have insurance for our clubs and our club members, we ask our club members to get individual insurance like that, to protect our club, to protect our members and to protect anyone else outside of the club, not to get hurt. We work with other clubs outside of our club to make sure that when they change their rules as far as safety, we also change our rules, because we want to improve and work on better safety rules. As far as safety, we actually make sure that when we are having an event, that we have safety nets, that we have any fire extinguishers, that we have first aid kits, anything like that, because we don't want anyone to get hurt. We want, we always make sure that we stay within the 400 feet and under and when we were talking about FAA, we do make sure that our members are registered within the FAA and we always, us and other MultiGP clubs within the area, we call up our local airports and we tell them that we are going to be having an event to make sure that they know that we are going to be flying, so they know that there's not going to be a situation or a problem. And also, we make sure that we stay within our perimeters. Within our hobby, we always make sure that this sport continues to grow and not hinder. So that's why I always make sure within our club that safety is our number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further would like to speak on this, discussion among commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Austin, how about accommodating anybody that would like to chat with you about some, anything they raised here? So you want to just step out in the retanda and anybody that would like to talk directly with Austin, who is the legal whiz and drafter of our ordinance, can do so at this point. Thank you. Okay, let's move to hearings. Ordinance is on second read, number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-95, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to regional facility identification signage, approving the sign package for the Orlando City Soccer Stadium pursuant to section 64.320 Orlando City Code, providing for penalties, severability, permit disclaimer, correction of scrupulous errors and an effective date.
Who did that?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone in the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-82, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located north of Park Lake Street, east of North Fire Avenue, south of East Mark Street and west of Thornton Avenue, comprised of .56 acres of land, more or less, from the 01 Office and Residential District with the traditional city overlay district to the planned development district with the traditional city overlay district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations. So the planned development district providing severability, correction of scrupulous errors, permit disclaimer and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone in the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-96, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to procedures for quasi judicial hearings, amending section 2.206 Orlando City Code, pre-hearing procedures to provide for certain quasi judicial hearings before the Orlando City Council in lieu of a hearing officer providing legislative findings and for severability, codification, correction of scrupulous errors and an effective date.
Move to the dot.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ng, second by Commissioner Ortiz. It's okay. Let's see, okay. This is a, an ordinance that allows us to create a path on our land use decisions when extraordinary circumstances exist to expedite the process and bring the decision directly to city council. It's ultimately a quasi judicial process ends with a city council in any event, it usually makes a stop with a hearing offer and a non-binding recommendation from the hearing officer, but ultimately, the city council makes the final decision in every case, whether it goes to a hearing officer or whether it goes through this new procedure. This is not unusual, a lot of the big cities, Tampa, Hialeah, Jacksonville, Maitland-Oviedo, use a process that does not include a hearing officer for their quasi judicial. Kyle, do you want to take over at this point and just lead us through this? I have a number of people that want to speak on this and there's a number of items that will be subsequent to this, but this starts the process we're working on today.
Sure. Mayor, let me give you just a quick overview of the remaining items on your agenda, because they have to go in a particular order if you choose to, if you choose to approve them. As you just heard, the first item would be an ordinance proposing an amendment to the quasi judicial process. You've read that into, the city clerk has read the title of that ordinance. You need to hold a public hearing on that, take testimony like you would on any other ordinance. Your code provides five minutes per person that wants to be heard on that item. After taking that testimony... After taking that testimony, if you choose to approve that ordinance, then you could move on to the next item. And we've, we've, as you mentioned earlier, the city clerk has ordered these on the agenda so that you can proceed down the agenda from beginning to end without having to reorder anything. If you, if, and only if you adopt the new quasi judicial code, you would then move down to new business, where you would have a hearing management order to consider. This does not require any kind of public hearing. It simply calls the quasi judicial hearing if you want to have that quasi judicial hearing on the Paramore Oaks PD today, okay? So you'd consider that, and then if you adopted that, you could then hold the quasi judicial hearing on the Paramore Oaks zoning application. And that, that's the part of the agenda that requires a little bit of explanation. Staff recommends that you call the quasi judicial hearing and that you first invite the planning official, Dean Grandin, to come up and give a four or five minute brief presentation on what the Paramore Oaks PD application is, what it's requesting, and the process that it has gone through to date. After that, we recommend that you call up each of the four parties that are a party to the quasi judicial application. That is two petitioners, and we recommend that you call petitioner Coward or his attorney, Mr. Lippman, who is here today first, followed by the attorney for Madison Hollow, which is Mr. Baker, Scott Baker, which is here today. And we recommend that you give each of them 10 or 12 minutes to present their case in chief. After that, you would invite up the applicant, who is also a party. The applicant is Invictus Development, and they're represented today by Mr. Brownlee, Mike Brownlee, who is, who is here. They, too, would get 10 or 12 minutes, as you deem appropriate, Mayor, to present their case in chief. Finally, our quasi judicial ordinance makes the city planning staff a party, and so we recommend that you offer the planning staff, our zoning official, Mark Sekman, 10 or 12 minutes to present their view of the application and what recommendation they made to the planning board and what recommendation they're making to you on the zoning application. Next is an opportunity for public testimony in our quasi judicial code. Members of the public who are here that are interested, that are not necessarily parties, have the opportunity to be heard. We recommend that you give each of those individuals three to five minutes, depending on the number of them that are here. And then next, as is normal in quasi judicial proceedings on land use applications before city councils, we recommend that you offer a brief rebuttal period for each of the parties, petitioner Coward, petitioner Madison Hollow, applicant Invictus, and the respondent city. We recommend, based on the number of questions that are raised during the case in chief, that you offer five to seven minutes there. Speaking of questions that come up, in a quasi judicial proceeding, parties have the opportunity to ask other parties questions. We've invited the parties to submit those questions. We've distributed, distributed those questions that we received to the various parties, but we also recommend that the various parties ask the questions that they have of the other party and that during rebuttal, the party that that question was directed to would have the opportunity to respond accordingly. After five to seven minutes of rebuttal for each of the, each of the parties, then council can ask questions of, of any of the parties or debate amongst themselves. And then you have a variety of options available to you at that point. You can approve the zoning application. You can approve the zoning application with conditions. You can deny the zoning application. The other option you have is to send this application back to the quasi judicial hearing officer that is already, that this has already been assigned to, and so you'll pick one of those options. If you choose to deny or to approve with conditions, we have a recommended order for you. If you approve that zoning application, then at that point, you would move on to hearings ordinance's second read to consider the PD ordinance for Paramore Oaks, but only if you approve the zoning application at that point. City clerk would then read the title of the ordinance and you would conduct a public hearing like you would on any ordinance. Finally, assuming all that has been approved, and only if all of that has been approved by you after hearing all the testimony, city staff is then presenting to you today a purchase and sale agreement between the city, the CRA, and Invictus Development, and a development agreement between those same parties. You, to do that, would have to hold a charter hearing, and we would recommend that you would call up your real estate division manager, Lori Botts, and the executive director of the CRA, Thomas Chapman, to introduce that item to you. Hold a hearing there with five minutes per speaker, except that Madison Hollow should receive 20 minutes to be heard on that item due to a trial settlement that we entered into with them last week to avoid an injunction trial last, last week. So Madison Hollow, Madison Hollow only, with a total of 20 minutes for the various entities that are involved in Madison Hollow. After that, you'd have the opportunity to vote yes or no on the purchase and sale and development agreement. If you, as city council, decide to approve that, then you would, can adjourn the city council meeting, reconvene the CRA, to vote on the same item for the CRA. You don't have to hold two separate hearings there, and Mayor, we recommend that you hold a hearing for both the city council and the CRA at the same time, but then take separate votes on those items if you choose to approve them. Any questions on all that?
Okay, I'm going to take you very slowly through this whole process and everybody will know exactly what we're doing as we do it. So the item that is before us to begin with is proposed ordinance 2016-96, which relates to quasi judicial procedures and would create a process that would bring an appeal directly to council under certain circumstances, rather than going through the hearing officer, or going through a hearing officer process, recognizing that ultimately, council is the final say on any appeal of a quasi, or is the final say on any quasi judicial case anyways. Okay, so we do have a number of people that would like to speak on this. I suspect we'll be hearing from a lot of these folks throughout the afternoon, so let's start with Phil Coward. And name, address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Phil Coward. My address is 1640 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I am one of the appellant's, and I'd like to give my five minutes to Mark Lippman, my attorney.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. With regard to the ordinance, I would restate everything, and I'm not going to now, based on the time limit that we presented at the first reading last week. Essentially, the due process that was created in 1994 is being changed, for whatever reason. I understand that the mayor has said that this is used in other cities, but the way it's being done here is truncating an already existing opposition to the pending ordinance change. We would point out a couple things quickly, that as a property owner adjacent to the subject property, my client, Mr. Coward's entities, is entitled to due process with respect to the proposed rezoning request. In this setting, due process includes the right to notice and opportunity to be heard, and that's pursuant to LeChance versus Erickson, 522 U.S., 262, and 118 Supreme Court, 753. My client is entitled to due process as he will be deprived of a constitutionally protected liberty or property interest. The way Mr. Coward's explained everything is very nice and it's, it seems to be a process that will work. However, you're applying it to someone who only had a week to prepare versus a previous opposition in which we were going through months of depositions, months of discovery. Here, you're taking that opportunity and just taking it away from us. The U.S. Supreme Court has held that there are three distinct factors to consider in the analysis of whether the due process accorded in any proceeding was constitutionally sufficient, and that's the private interest that will be affected by the official action, the risk of an erroneous deprivation of such interest through the procedures, and the probable value, if any, of additional or substitute procedural safeguards. There are no procedural safeguards here. The way things have been explained to me is, we're not even presenting expert witnesses today. We're going to have to go through affidavits. I've been told just now that we have 12 minutes to present, and that's going to be our case in chief. Involved with that also is going to, also going to have to include our questions that we're going to be asking, which in a normal procedure could be objections for the plaintiff in this case. And we're not going to be able to present something succinctly for the board to understand, and it's going to truncate the process that we're allowed. Since 1994, the cities had procedures in place for quasi judicial hearings, such as those described here and below regarding rezoning applications and opposition to rezoning applications. As set forth in Title I, Chapter 2, Article 12, I'm sorry, Article 32 of the City Code, the 1994 QJ procedure specifically Section 2.202, the purpose of this article, and this is the rules promulgated by the city, the purpose of this article is to provide adequate due process to applicants seeking quasi judicial determinations. Pursuant to the 1994 QJ procedure, Section 2.203 Sub 1, plaintiff is within the definition, my client's in the definition, of an adversely affected person, and as a person who will suffer a negative effect to a protected interest as a result of the quasi judicial actions sought by the applicant. Pursuant to Section 2.203 Sub 10 of the 1994 quasi judicial procedures, my client's also considered to be one of the parties in the quasi judicial hearing, and as the party shall be, the city, the applicant, the petitioner, and a respondent in a human relations board case, and any adversely affected person who filed a hearing request in that matter. Further pursuant to Section 2.205 Sub 1 of the 94 quasi judicial procedures, on October 25th, 2016, my client timely filed a request for hearing with regard to the approval of the MPB of the rezoning request, and on November 14th, 2016, my client timely filed his petition in opposition to the board decision pursuant to Section 2.205 Sub 2 of the 94 quasi judicial procedures. The city designated the quasi judicial hearing on my client's case, and case number QJ 2016-008 is the case number that was assigned. My client's petition has been, has previously been assigned to a hearing officer, and plaintiff has been proceeding to prosecute his petition at the quasi judicial hearing to be held pursuant to the 94 quasi judicial procedures. On December 2nd, 2016, the city had two public notices published. The first regarded ordinance number 2016-96, and pursuant to ordinance number 2016-96, the 94 quasi judicial procedures would be amended by adding subsection 2.206 Sub 6, that in essence would allow certain quasi judicial hearings before the Orlando City Council in lieu of a hearing using procedures not specified in the ordinance from the 2016-96, other than the statement that the city council will provide reasonable time for each adversely affected party to be heard on the quasi judicial matter. If you look at the way things are moving, our reasonable notice is going to be, you're immediately going to pass this, I'm assuming, this ordinance, and then our notice will be given in the next reading that's listed on the agenda. So if you look at it that way, we're being given five minutes to prepare for a quasi judicial hearing. The city informed my client via my, my office that the city council intends to do the second reading of number 2016-96, and this is what the agenda states, and then immediately-
Time, I know that you have five more minutes on, under your own name, so why don't we just start the clock on that five minutes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. And then immediately elect the new quasi judicial hearing procedures to state case number QJ 2016-008 regarding the rezoning request, and determine that the city council will hear the petition in opposition to the rezoning request. We anticipate that you're going to deny the petition and adopt the ordinance number 2016-97, adopting and approving the rezoning request. In fact, we believe that the, and Mr. Shepherd has already provided us with a proposed form of the order adopting ordinance, and it is on the agenda as the next item up. At this juncture, your plan to radically change the 22-year-old procedure for hearing opposition to applications such as the rezoning requests, which is the 94 quasi judicial procedures, and apply a vague ad hoc procedure solely to the rezoning request, which is new Section 2.206 Sub 6, will as a direct result deny my client his due process rights, his corporations' the due process rights, under the U.S. and Florida constitutions. Florida statutory and common law and the 94 QJ procedures are going to be thrown out the door. As a party to the quasi judicial hearing regarding the rezoning request, we're not going to have any rights. All the conditions precedent to the filing of this action were met by my client, and instead of allowing him the opportunity to present as he originally thought he was going to be presenting, and certainly, had he known at the time that this new ordinance would be passed, we would have taken different steps to be prepared, instead, we're being basically shown the door, saying, you don't have any rights. We're going to move forward with a, with a quasi judicial hearing, something that in my previous case, we had set up approximately three days to have a quasi judicial hearing. I'm being given 10 to 12 minutes. So something that normally would take a lot of time is being just taken away. And I don't think that the city council appreciates that and the time and the effort put into it. I know Mr. Shepherd does, because he was involved with the previous process, and that's what he does. But I don't think the council understands that you're taking our ability to present evidence, cross-examine witnesses, to be fully heard, which is the rights that have already been promulgated, is being taken away. We would ask that the city council deny this new ordinance, allow the quasi judicial proceedings to happen as they were intended to happen under the 94 rules, and we would ask that the council seriously consider the ramifications that this ordinance, that this is going to be passed today, will have for future ordinances in the, in the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charles Kenyon.
Charles Kenyon, 104 Wood Mill Road, Longwood, Florida, 32779. I'm, I'm just amazed by this process, folks. This is about as much of a kangaroo court as I've ever seen. What, what you're doing here is unbelievable. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves, all of you, every single one of you, including you, Regina. This is not right. You've had 14 years to put something on this property, and you come in at the last second and expect us to acquiesce and/or be rolled over by a city council that's violating its own rules. You ought to be ashamed. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you. Mark Brown, Mike Brownlee.
Members of the council, Mayor Dyer, good afternoon. Mike Brownlee, I'm a board certified appellate attorney from the law firm of Fisher-Rushman right up the road at 390 North Orange Avenue, and I represent Invictus Development. Lots of talk about due process violations, some really egregious words to y'all about, based on purported violations of the law. Law's not ambiguous in this area at all, okay? There's a Fifth District Court of Appeal decision, it's called Corrillin, I believe, it's in the materials that we submitted to y'all. Makes very, very clear that in this specific context, dealing with-
Mike, get a little closer to the mic there.
That, that in this specific context, when you're dealing with a challenge to a zoning board determination, two things are required, notice and an opportunity to be heard. There's no argument they haven't had notice. They're here at the first reading, represented by council. Here, here today, again, represented by council. There's no argument they haven't had an opportunity to be heard. For some reasons, they're taking up their time, having principals from their corporate entities come up here and talk to you, instead of using that time to do what this process will, can and will and should entail, to afford them due process, which is bringing in affected residents of the neighborhoods. Where's their, where's their test, whose due process rights, whose due process rights are we talking about? Where are the people from the neighborhoods here saying, here's how this is really going to, this, here's how this zoning is going to impact us? That's what this process is designed to protect. I know the tests that will be applied down the road and the SIRCRI challenge that has been threatened, feel very confident any reviewing court will, based on the decision I just cited, agree that the, that due process, plenty of due process was afforded. This would be enough due process if we had petitioners who had legitimate gripes, who had standing, these petitioners do not. This would be adequate due process for those folks. It's absolutely adequate due process for these, for these people, these current petitioners. It's absolutely adequate due process for these people, these current petitioners. And on a more general level, the issue with the code, under the current regime, just by virtue of filing a petition, you're guaranteed a 30, excuse me, a 60-day stay, automatic pumping of the brakes on the zoning board decision taking effect. That's unprecedented in any other legal scenario I can think of. Frankly, I couldn't believe that was the case when I heard it. Someone could write, "Go magic in a petition," someone from Alaska, file it, and that's going to automatically stop the clock. It's not a good policy, it should be changed, and under the circumstances of this case, it really should be changed. So I hope the council is not going to be fooled frankly by these lofty due process arguments that are a mischaracterization of the law, and to the extent, if y'all have any questions about what the state of the law is, I'd love to answer them for you, because there's binding precedent in this jurisdiction that says this is plenty of due process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Paula Rhodes. My address is 211 Southwestland Avenue, Unit 2, Tampa, Florida, 33606. I am here on behalf of Invictus Development, I am a member and manager of that entity. I'd like to thank you first of all for going forward with this action. I realize that there have been a lot of terms thrown around, some rather emotional language like the taking democracy and breaking it, and I wanted to frame up this matter before you as the due process issue has been put front and center. I think you need to realize that there is no denial of due process here, but rather a prevention of abuse of process here by persons who really aren't entitled to use of the process. And I say that because they are not adversely affected persons in the manner required in order to be able to maintain this action in the first place, much less be heard on it. The entities, the Madison entities, first of all, neither of those two Madison entities, which I've repeatedly said to you are the same people, they simply form these entities to hold specific projects. We're talking about the same underlying ownership and people, we're talking about one set of owners here. One of those three entities has a purchase contract on a piece of property. They've never produced it, despite the fact that they've produced many other things in the record, they've never produced a copy of it, they've never given the date, the name of the other party, title of the document, or anything about it. But I have been in real estate for a very long time, and I can tell you, there's, you'd be hard pressed to find a purchase contract that you can't get out of tomorrow if you need to. So that gives them nothing. They have no property rights, no protected interest. Now, Mr. Cowherd and his entities do in fact have title to properties, they're rental properties. He doesn't live in them, he's not a member of the neighborhood. I don't blame him, given the number of code enforcement violations that I have uncovered in looking at the record, but what he does have is an economic interest in seeing something other than affordable housing put in the Paramore neighborhood. It has nothing to do with whether affordable housing is needed there, that decision has already been made, and the city is doing what the city needs to do and should do. And all we did was respond to a advertised, public solicitation by the city to develop a property that the city had a vision for, and all we're trying to do is fulfill that vision. What they're trying to do is take a process, and this is not the first time that these parties have done that, and use it to delay something to ensure that it cannot happen. And the reason why this needs to be done is not only to prevent those kinds of abusive process, but also to allow for exigent circumstances to be addressed. Nothing in what the city council's being asked to do today says that you're throwing the hearing officer concept out the window. You're simply adding to the ordinance to allow under certain circumstances that warrant it for another way to go through the process. Since my counsel has already gone into the fact that they've already had process, and they're here again today, and they will once again receive process, please, please, do not be persuaded that there is any sort of constitutional denial or threat to democracy here, because that's not what's happening. If the city doesn't put a stop to this kind of abuse and take this action that's before you right now, which I applaud wholeheartedly, because I think it's brave, I think it's important, and I think it's the thing you have to do, or you're going to see this kind of thing happen again and again. So stop the abuse now, and let things proceed orderly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Scott Baker, representing three companies today, Madison Plaza LLC, Madison Hollow South LLC, and SW Florida LLC, 315 East Robinson Street, Suite 600, Orlando, Florida. Of those three entities, well, all three of them are under contract to purchase real estate in Orlando, which is more than the last speaker has to go on. There is no signed purchase contract yet that they're acting on, so we have an equitable interest in three pieces of real estate in Orlando, one of which is located adjacent to the property we're talking about today. Now, I don't know how we could avoid standing if you own the property next door or have an equitable interest next door. I just don't see how that could be anything but true. But I'm not going to repeat all the arguments I made last week, a week ago. I'm going to say I think this is bad policy, there may be perhaps some fixes needed to the system, but it's a system that's been going on for 22 years, and we entered a process, we played by the rules that have been laid out for us, and as soon as we entered into the process, the rug got pulled out from under us. So I urge you to not pass this ordinance today, I think it's bad policy at this time, and take, step back, take a look at how it can be fixed. I look around downtown, I see the Plaza Theater, I see Baldwin Park, outside of downtown, the airport, things going on at the Centralplex, Lake Nona, they all made it through this horrible quasi judicial process, and they're great projects. Why can't this applicant be expected to follow the same rules? Thank you.
Okay, that's all the public testimony. I have questions of Kyle.
Yeah, I have, Mayor, I have-
You've probably turned it in for something else, Jose, not on this one. There's five more hearings.
Hold on. Is that something?
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question of Kyle, and I need to, because I didn't realize that Commissioner Hill was going to be accusing herself because of comments she made at another hearing. I did make a comment, I said I would like to support Commissioner Hill, but I have concerns about the process. I did say that. Does that, does that preclude me from voting further?
Excuse, Kyle, excuse me. No, ma'am, this item, the ordinance, is a legislative item, and it's not, so it's not a quasi judicial item at all on this ordinance. So you don't owe a fair and neutral magistrate during the legislative process, you can vote on this, Commissioner Hill can vote on this. What Commissioner Hill was saying was in an abundance of caution, if you all decide to hold the quasi judicial hearing today, she will recuse herself from that vote to ensure that we have a neutral magistrate making a decision on the quasi judicial. So no concerns about this ordinance at all.
So my statement that I want to support Commissioner Hill, but I have concerns about this process would not preclude me from voting on anything further?
No, ma'am, as long as you can be a fair and neutral magistrate if a hearing is held today.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, Mayor, because I did make a statement and I wanted to get an opinion, okay?
And again, Commissioner Hill has chosen to recuse herself from the area that will be standing as an arbiter versus a legislator. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and Kyle, let me ask a couple of quick questions. One of the benefits of the current quasi system is that we have an independent magistrate determine who has got standing on a project. This project moves forward, I mean, this ordinance moves forward, is that a determination that the council will make on who has standing, or is that a determination?
That's a determination that you would then be making, and you can ask your counsel, whoever's down here, to help guide you on that, but you would be taking the place of the hearing officer. So yes, to the extent that someone is alleging that they are a party, they have to prove to you that they are an adversely affected party, and you should quiz them about that if you're curious about it. When they get up to make their case in chief, I suspect that you'll hear them assert the facts that they think support their standing.
The ordinance itself, though, allows us in process that it would come to us to determine whether we want to hear it or not effectively, it was like we possess, you've got ahead of us, and then at that moment, we would then determine that. So it seems that the process of determining standing and the process of the hearing itself, as I understand, so correct me if I'm wrong on the quasi, somebody files an appeal and a quasi judicial officer determines that they don't have standing, they're no longer involved in the process.
That's right. Now, they could always show up at a hearing to be heard on an ordinance implementing the application-
Correct.
-but they wouldn't be a party for purposes of the quasi judicial proceeding.
And at that moment, then therefore there is no public input, I shouldn't say that, there is no input from somebody who does not have standing until such time it becomes a public process, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And in this process that we're doing this, we are moving that forward to combine those two together. You asked before about the public could have an input on it, you're now looking for non-affected parties.
You're looking for both adversely affected parties, they are heard as parties. In our quasi judicial system, you are also going to hear from non-adversely affected parties, just people that have some interest in the outcome, so you'll be hearing from both today.
I consciously support this, and also would love to see us reevaluate our current quasi judicial process, and such that we may put some deadlines inside those processes as it moves forward. It has been common in the last 11 years that I've been here, it's been common that people use this process to push it down the road, in which case adversely affects or adversely causes additional investment by people in this, in which the outcome has not changed. And so my thought is that as we look at this process, which I'm cautiously in favor of, I would also like to see us put maybe in either a policy or ordinance form, that the appellate must respond in 30 days, that, you know, if we can't find quasi judicial officers that would accomplish that task, then let's go find them. Because I know that on several occasions, we couldn't get to a quasi person because we, they were out of town, and they had some other issues related. I just think if we put some deadlines in that, then I think that this process can move a little bit faster in the sake, on behalf of due process to the people that we deal with. Those are just two issues that I would like to see the second looked at as we move forward on this process.
Okay, noted.
Okay, and the other second part is this, we always have the right on this process to move it back to a hearing officer.
Yes, sir.
So we had ideas that we can determine that, gosh, we don't necessarily agree with the recommendation to come to us, and we think we can go send it back to a hearing officer for a impartial-
That's absolutely right. That's right.
Impartial is a long term, and exterior opinion would be a better way that I would say that. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, sir. This is so interesting, and let's not lose sight of the fact that the reason why we are amending, not violating our own law, but amending our law, is because there's a set of special circumstances we have to meet in order to qualify for this. Am I correct on that, Kyle?
Yes, sir. In this case, it's an application.
Therefore, this gives us the opportunity, and the way we're writing this is just in extreme special circumstances, we would appeal to this system, we had, I mean, this could happen in another blue moon or something like that, it's not that that's what we're going to be doing every time, it's just in special circumstances, like the one we had in front of us.
That's right. Staff anticipates it would be a rare invocation of this process.
And there is a clear and present benefit to this for the community, for the quality of life and human dignity. Am I correct?
Staff is recommending approval of a purchase and sale agreement today, so staff, yes, is recommending that this new process be invoked today because of the circumstances involved, that you're going to hear more about as we move into the quasi and into the public hearings.
Thank you, sir.
But to your point, Commissioner Ortiz, you voted on an RFP process that we then went through, and you, the entire council, voted unanimously on the selection of the developer, so we're now going through what should have been a ministerial or administrative type of process.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, I'd just say that sometimes a time delay with quasi judicial actually does make the project better. I have to disagree. When I used to represent Baldwin Park, we got better architectural process, better architecture out of that process. On Cypress Creek, we got better setbacks with the adjoining neighbors, and on Mills Park, there was a concern for adjoining property, which we worked out with some fencing and stuff, so, and some access issues. So I think sometimes the delay actually does create a better project, because it forces the two, the two to kind of, you know, to work together. So, you know, I think that's why you kind of have to have different tools in the tool basket to kind of choose from.
Well, and I think that's why we're setting up in this fashion that you can go through the whole process, or in certain circumstances not, because you're absolutely right, in some cases, it makes a project better, in some cases, it just kills it because of cost to carry money.
Right, and, right.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yeah, and let me also agree with you, Commissioner Sheehan, I do not think that we, stuff should rush here and we should do it. I think you're right, I think there is some process that makes it better. But I also know that in a recent issue, there was a one-year delay based upon an effective appeal that has cost the builder millions of dollars in terms of getting it accomplished for no other reason, and the project already been determined, already been determined to be a good project, there was no other negotiation done at that point. And so it is a delicate balance on both sides of that fence, and that's, you know, that's kind of why I like this idea, is that we always have a chance to bring it to us, send it back if we feel that there is better opportunity for them to negotiate with an arbitrator. So, but I think you're right, there are projects that have been better, there are projects that have also not been any different, but cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in terms of legal fees to accomplish really nothing into it.
Further discussion, hearing not all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Disposed, motion carries. Okay, I am signing the ordinance, so we are now governed by the ordinance that we just adopted. Let's move on to new business, and we have one item which is adopting a hearing management order for JQ 216-008 relating to Paramore Oaks, so pursuant to section 2.206 Sub Six Orlando City Code, the proposed hearing management order on today's agenda will order the hearing of case QJ 216-008 relating to zoning application case, zoning 2016-00024, Paramore Oaks, planned development for the city council today, Monday, December 12th, 2016. The proposed order provides findings and facts in accordance with Section 2.206 Sub Six Orlando City Code, and also provides rules of procedure for the conduct of the quasi judicial hearing. Is Kyle?
You got it, so you just need a motion to approve that hearing management order, second, and then vote on that.
Motion approved. Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Disposed, motion carries. All right, now we'll move to the quasi judicial hearing, number one, which is quasi judicial hearing on case 2016-008. Okay, Kyle, would you just state for the record that you have given everybody that's involved in this, so the two petitioners, and the applicant, and in our case, the city planning official notification previously of the procedure that we were going to use?
Yes, sir, last week.
Okay, then what I would like at this point is for- Then what I would like at this point is for everybody that is going to provide witness testimony in this hearing to come forward in front of the city clerk and be sworn in. So your lawyers are opinion testimony. But if you're giving factual testimony, I need you to come be sworn in, including our city staff.
All right, if you could all raise your right hand. Anyone who, you're all going to be testifying today? Out your heads, okay. All right, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth?
I do.
All right, very good.
And Madam Clerk, everybody state their names so that we can put into the record who was sworn in.
Paul Perez.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. Thank you. For a set, Mayor.
Okay, then the procedure that we are going to follow will be, as Kyle outlined previously, I'm going to ask Dean, as the city planning official, to give a brief presentation on the Paramore Oaks PD. Then I will call on each of the petitioners in turn and give them each 10 minutes. So Mr. Coward will be first, Madison Hollow will be second, 10 minutes. The applicant, Invictus, will have 10 minutes after that. And the city will have 10 minutes represented by our city zoning official. We will then take public testimony for anybody that is not a party to the action. We'll have five minutes. We will then give the, each of the petitioners, the applicant, and the respondent city five minutes for a rebuttal. We'll then have questions and comments and discussion from council and make a decision on this matter. All right, so we're going to start with Dean.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. We're here this afternoon, as you described, to go over the Paramore Oaks.
You just picked it up.
Framework plan development. And I'm going to provide an overview. This is KZON 2016 number 24. The request is as follows. If the applicant is requesting a new framework plan development, a PD, to establish a phased 178, unit three and four-story multifamily and 33-unit, two-story townhome development in the Paramore neighborhood. An affordable housing density bonus of 3.2 dwelling units per acre is needed to achieve a net density of 33.2 dwelling units per acre. And I might add that that equivocates to an additional 24 units on the overall site. This is a project location map. It shows that there are multiple parcels between Carter Street on the north, Willa Street on the south, Short Avenue on the west, and Erickson Avenue on the east. A little background on this site. For those who've been around a while, in 1965, the Paramore Village PUD was constructed, consisting of 75 single-family attached townhomes. In 2004, due to neglect, the Paramore Village was ultimately demolished. In 2009, Weaver Court and portion of America Street were abandoned. The former Paramore Village property was rezoned to PD for the proposed Wells Landing Townhome and single-family home development, subject to replating as well as Landing subdivision, which exists today. In 2015, in part due to the recession, the property was never developed. Instead, the property was transferred back to the CRA, and then there was a solicitation to issue for redevelopment proposals with applications received in later 2015. In 2016, the Paramore Oaks Framework PD was recommended for approval by the municipal planning board. Two appeals were filed against the PD recommendation of approval. This is the proposed site plan. What's important to note here is that the tallest structures on the property are in the middle of the property, bounded by America Street on the north and Conley on the south. On the west side of the property, there are townhomes adjacent to the single-family neighborhood. There are also townhomes on Paramore Avenue, south of the site, adjacent to single-family residential development. So great care has been taken to address compatibility with surrounding single-family neighborhoods and also to put the bulk of that higher-density, taller structures in the middle of the site on Paramore. In fact, Paramore represents the front door of this project. The project would be in two phases. Phase one would have 101 apartments, 19 townhomes. Phase two, 77 apartments and 14 townhomes. Some building elevations. There is a three-story building on the northernmost portion of Paramore Avenue, and then it transitions to four stories. And there are also some elevations for the two-story townhomes that will be provided on the west side of the property and on the south. Some important findings. The proposal is consistent with the state comprehensive plan, chapter 187 Florida statutes, the East Florida Strategic Regional Policy Plan, and with the provisions of chapter 163, part two of the Florida statutes. Proposal is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's adopted growth management plan. Proposal is consistent with all applicable requirements of the City of Orlando Land Development Code, the Downtown Orlando CRA Plan, and the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan. Proposed framework PD conforms to all applicable performance and design standards and adequate public facilities exist to serve the proposed use. Staff and MPB recommended approval of the Paramore Oaks PD as a framework PD, subject to 36 additional required conditions and 12 informational comments contained in the MPB staff report. There are alleged quasi judicial parties. The appellant is Scott Baker. Another appellant is Philip Coward. Respondent applicant is Richard Cavalieri of Invictus Development. And lastly, the respondent is the Economic Development Department, City of Orlando, Florida, Planning Division. As Kyle mentioned to you before, you have several options before you today. And actually, I think there are five altogether. The first is to approve the zoning application, ZY 2016 number 24. To approve the same zoning application with conditions reckoned by staff and the MPB. The third is to approve the zoning application with revised conditions by the city council. The fourth is to deny the zoning application. And fifth would be to direct staff to forward the quasi judicial request to a hearing officer for reconsideration at a future council meeting. Mayor, that ends my presentation. I think we move on to the next presentation.
Okay, are there questions of Dean at this point? We will move to the petitioners. Let's begin with petitioner Coward's case in chief, which will be 10 minutes. And you may divide your time however you see fit.
Thank you, sir. Mark Lippman, Lippman-Lovs, is 4767 New Broad Street, Orlando, Florida. I represent Mr. Coward and his interests. Just briefly, we do have some objections. I know there was mention prior to this starting that Commissioner Hill was going to recuse herself, but that officially has not taken place yet since this has just passed. Also, Commissioner Sheehan had also indicated that she was going to recuse herself. And again, that has not necessarily taken place as of right now. There's been nothing official for purposes of this record. So we would ask that they, at some point, recuse themselves on this hearing based on the statements they had made prior to.
Well, prior to this, Commissioner Hill has indicated that she would recuse herself from the quasi judicial hearing as well as the, if we reach that far, the adoption of the ordinance relating to the Paramore Oaks PD zoning. So, Madam Clerk, that's already in the record, but let's take note of that for the purpose of these two hearings as well. I have not had an indication that Commissioner Sheehan was abstaining.
I asked an opinion, and I was told that that did not recuse me from that. So clarify that.
And I'm just doing this for purposes of the record, since we need to create one. Also, prior to this hearing, we submitted a lack of unified control OCPA map, a Wells Landing replat, executive summary and action plan, a no change in development conditions OCPA aerial map 2009 and 2016, a no change in developmental conditions subject neighborhood district 2014 Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan, the Vision Plan, a growth management plan indicators through a 2014 annual report, the underlying zoning, Wells Landing PD, City of Orlando staff report zone 2008 triple zero four zero, Orlando GMP references, the PD non-compliance GMB policy, section 6.14, the HUD recap area, and an affidavit by our expert, Mr. Cope, who's standing to my right. Just wanted, for purposes of the record, it's all, all the commissioners should have a copy of it.
And I will represent for the record that the documentation that's been submitted by both petitioners as well as the applicant have been provided, to the extent they were provided to the clerk, have also been provided to each city council member.
That's correct, sir.
And then also for record, we have not been able to depose any of the witnesses. We haven't received any of the evidence that's being submitted today. And for purposes of due process, we aren't able to give a full presentation, as should be allowed. With regard to this case, petitioner's 800 McFall Avenue property with frontage on Conley Street is an immediately adjacent property to the applicant's subject property, southern boundary along Conley Street. Also, for purposes of the record, at the first reading, we submitted the petition in opposition to the City of Orlando, Florida, case number QJ 2016 008. It's our estimate that the petitioner's right to enjoyment of his property, part of the traditional lot and block land pattern of downtown Orlando will be adversely affected by the contrast in the non-traditional multifamily layout of the development plan as one. Two, the contrast of the intensity of the applicant's subject development plan to the surrounding R-2V/T/PH neighborhood caused by an increase of the land use intensity or density, combined with, number three, a concentration of traffic generation and traffic flows onto Conley Street due to an assumed abandonment of America Street and its connection to South Paramore Avenue. The character of the proposed PD fronting upon Conley Street is a four-story multifamily, as just was presented, surrounding a large paved parking area, which the city transportation staff has indicated to be potentially problematic, insufficient for the number of multifamily dwellings. This character is in direct contrast to the lot and block development pattern lying west, south, and southeast of the project. This character is in direct contrast to the recorded Wells Landing replat, Wells Landing PD, which creates a lot and block development with two-story, single-lot buildings in the same character as the surrounding neighborhood. For purposes of the record, I apologize for speaking quickly, but we only have a limited amount of time. With regard to how this directly affects my client, we have to establish that it is the test requiring the party challenging a development order to show special damages peculiar to the party which differ in kind, as opposed to degree, to the damages suffered by the community as a whole. And that's City of Fort Myers versus split 988 Southern Second, 28. In that case, distinguishing between standing under section 163.3215 of the Florida statutes and standing to bring up petition for writ of certiorari. The evidence must be included in the record before the local government, or it will not be considered on a petition for writ of certiorari. All the evidence we've already submitted is part of that establishment of why my client is singularly harmed by this change in the ordinance. And for purposes of consideration, we would like you to consider that he does have standing to be here today and that he does have the proper evidence that's been presented. The applicant's described property as an assemblage of land and publicly dedicated street right-of-way that the applicant and city have referred to as 744 South Paramore Ave, lying west of Interstate 4 and south of State Road 408. The disputed issues of material fact are: My client disputes applicant and city representation regarding unified control of the property land areas. The applicant, together with the property owner, does not possess unified control of the land areas of America Street and McFall Avenue, as they are currently dedicated to the perpetual use of the public. You don't own the land, the public does. This is evidenced by the dedication contained in the Wells Landing replat found in plat book 73, page 122, Orange County official records. We further dispute the city staff report representation, and that's project contest regarding a default zoning of R3C/T/PH. The existing Wells Landing PD approved in 2009, prepared by the same city staff individual as this subject, the same person who prepared this report prepared the one in 2009, clearly indicates the default zoning in text and graphic mapping exhibits to be R3B/T/PH. So one of the questions we would ask as part of our objections, and just quickly to establish, Mr. Shepherd and I have found that the best way to express our objections, otherwise they're waves, is to have those questions asked to the commission, and then the commission can turn around and determine if they're going to ask them or not. So our first objection to what the city's presented is that why in 2009, there was clearly an indication of the default zoning in text and graphic mapping? And here, the city staff report presents no finding of fact that support a historical change of the default zoning from the Wells Landing PD of R-3B/T/PH. We further dispute the city staff report finding that the proposed development is in a default R-3C/T/PH zoning district, as provided previously in what I just stated. We also dispute the city staff report representations regarding the purpose of the framework PD, which describes release from zoning setbacks, building height requirements, relief from minimum required off-street parking, and allows a density bonus because the staff improperly applied a default zoning of R-3C/T/PH when in fact, no such default zoning exists. And that would be our second question and objection as to where did they make the determination that a default zoning does exist? At what point was that determination made, and what is it based on? Further, petitioner disputes the city staff report finding that the proposed PD is consistent with the city's land development code. We would ask as another objection, how is it consistent? Where did they make the consistency come together? And how are they showing that as an example, or what evidence do they have? We further dispute the city staff reports finding that the proposed PD is consistent with the city's growth management plan. These are the ultimate facts. There are no conditions that have changed in the neighborhood since the approval of the Wells Landing PD in 2009 to warrant a change of the default zoning. There are no conditions that have changed in the neighborhood to support a change of zoning from the area designated R-2B/T/PH to the city staff assertion that the underlying zoning will be R-3C/T/PH. No conditions have changed in the neighborhood to support a new PD development plan, which eliminates the platted plots, lots, blocks, and public streets of the existing Wells Landing PD approved in 2009. Further, the city staff report provides no finding of fact to support a change of zoning to R-3C/T/PH for any of the land areas within the proposed PD land area boundaries. It's our contention that the applicant and property owner do not possess unified control of the total land area contained in the PD application as required by LDC section 58.363, as provided in the reference section. No application shall be considered until the requirements of this section have been fully complied with. Further, a meets and bounds legal description is not acceptable for an accurate description of the PD land area unless there's been an abandonment of the dedicated streets of rights of way and a replat of the lots and blocks according to the Wells Landing replat as recorded in plat book 73, page 122, of the Orange County official records. The application is not in conformance with LDC section 60.115, compatibility with adjacent uses. In order for the subject PD to develop, it will require a subdivision replat of the existing Wells Landing replat, as recorded and referenced earlier. This section requires the subdivision layout shall be such as to ensure compatibility of the proposed improvement and intended uses with adjacent existing and proposed land uses. The proposed development plan is for an intense multifamily project with four-story apartment buildings. We heard some presentation that some of them are going to be three. But that is either or. It's not compatible with the surrounding R-2B zoning districts and to which R-2B zoning is part of the actual default zoning of the added land area of the proposed PD boundary lying south and southeast of the Wells Landing PD area. Further, the application is not in conformance with LDC section 65.365. Unauthorized changes prohibited. The city staff report has made no unauthorized change to the official zoning map in asserting that the underlying zoning of the PD is R-3C/T/PH.
You've got about a minute and a half left.
Thank you. Ultimately, this is the reason why we need a full quasi judicial hearing, because we don't have the time to present everything. We presented an affidavit that Matt Cope has created, and he's available for questions. Everything that I've stated so far and that we submitted as evidence, we'd ask that the commission consider because the application is rife. Just through it, there are so many inconsistencies and things in there that don't belong that you can't consider this application until those things are flushed out, which is the purpose of the quasi judicial proceeding. So unless, and we've, again, just as we had due process and notice of today's hearing, Invictus did too. They know what our contentions are, and we haven't heard anything other than standing. So if they can address all the issues that we have in our submitted information from Mr. Cope's affidavit, then at some point, either my client can be fully satisfied that everything is being complied with. everything is being complied with, or changes can be made, or this ordinance will not pass. And I do submit Mr. Kope for, before this council, to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does Mr. Kope stand by his affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Kope on factual issues within the affidavit?
Does he have a statement to make, Mayor?
I don't think he has a statement outside his affidavit.
Right. The affidavit is a statement. He's just available for cross-examination by you as acting as a hearing officer.
Commissioner, all of the information that you would require, I have provided in my affidavit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to the second petitioner, Madison Hollow.
Later on.
Hello again, Mayor and Commissioners. Scott Baker. I'm joined by my partner, Tim Schulte. We're with Zimmerman Coiser Sutcliffe, 315 East Robinson Street, Suite 600, Orlando. And again, representing Madison Plaza LLC, Madison Hollow South LLC, SW Florida LLC. Like Mr. Lippman, I'm going to go pretty quickly. I would ask you to consider the exhibits that I provided this morning. And I want, Mayor, if I could ask a point of order, I do have some questions I wrote down. When would be the proper way to ask those questions?
During the course of your presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would ask whoever you're asking the questions to, to listen to the questions so we don't need to repeat them. And if it's a city response or an invictus response, do the best you can to respond.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions are all for the zoning officials, so I'll just save the last few minutes, last few minutes of my time to ask those questions. And I provided them this morning to Mr. Shepherd as well. So again, I'm going to talk about the items that are more fully developed in my, in exhibit one, which is the petition itself. And really, I'm going to focus on four issues, but let me talk about standing first. The project we represent is equitable interest in real estate at, adjacent to the proposed zoning or proposed PD zoning ordinance. That, I provided a color aerial showing you the location of the eight.
Madam Clerk, would you start his time?
Yes, sir. It's... Sorry.
Eight fourteen.
Whole extra minute and a half there, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take what I can get today. Eight fourteen, South Paramore is owned by the applicant. They also own property on, off of Kirkman Road and also on their, they're equitable owners of property off of Narcoosi Road and Kirkman Road. They are affordable housing developers. They've delivered hundreds, upon hundreds of units to seniors and low-income families throughout the state, and they're based in central Florida. The four issues I'm going to quickly hit are as follows. Number one, the density bonus. It was improperly granted. Number two, parking. The project is underparked dramatically. Number, number three, the project is not consistent with the GMP. Number four, the city does not own the land that it's promising to sell. So as to the first issue on the density bonus, there is a specific procedure that the city has to go through to award a density bonus. The reason for that is because it exceeds what's in our, your comprehensive plan for the city, our comprehensive plan. I'm, I'm a city resident. I count on that plan to be essentially unchanged for the next 20 to 30 years. The density bonus allows an applicant to go over the maximum density. That's essentially, and it requires special scrutiny by the planning official. We didn't get that in this case, and that's going to be one of my questions. Issue number two is the parking. The staff report that you were presented talked about there's, that there's not going to be the same amount of parking provided in this neighbor, in this development that's provided to other projects. And the staff report said essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, "If it becomes problematic, we'll deal with it later," by meaning that code enforcement and the planning official will deal with it. They did use the word problematic. The quote is, "If it becomes problematic as determined by city code enforcement and the zoning official." I don't know what problematic means. It's not defined in the code, and it's a reactive solution. It's not planning. I don't know of any other neighbor, and there's further support for this, this parking issue by stating in the staff report, "Most people ride bikes here or walk." No evidence provided for that. So I don't know of any other part of town where we would be doing this, saying you don't need to park the project as much as we would park everywhere else because everybody is riding a bike, or a lot of people are riding a bike. Number three, the consistency with the GMP. The specific policy I want to talk about, and I did give you a copy of the policy, and again, it's the constitution for how this city's going to grow. That's, that's the other way of looking at your comp plan. It's a constitution. It's not designed to be altered or disregarded. The, in particular, housing policy 2.2.2 and 2.2.1, sorry, I said them out of order, and objective 2.2, "Those discourage concentrations of affordable multifamily housing in socially and economically distressed areas of the city." The staff report calls this area blighted. We're putting 80% of this project is going to be affordable. None of those units are going to be insured or set aside for Paramore residents. A person can move in from out of this state or out of this community and qualify for one of these apartments. There's no guarantee it will help people in Paramore. My final issue is, is the ownership issue. Mr. Lippman talked about the plat. There are platted rights-of-way and one of the, within the project, one of the items I gave you is a, and I have the original here. I don't have the actual surveyor here with me today, but in these quasi-judicial hearings, you don't have the same proceedings, evidence rules that you would in a court. He states that, number one, the verified legal description form contains public right-of-way. Number two, the area of that public right-of-way is .97 acres. You can't count land that you don't own as part of your zoning application. And I provided a quote from the land development code that I, I'm going to ask the zoning official to address. Mayor, if I may, I would like to ask those questions now. Number one, these are directed to Mark or Mr. Sekman. Number, and I think he's had a chance to read them. I could even dispose, well, for the record, I can get them on the record, but they are in your packet?
If they're in the packet, then they're in the record. So if you'd rather use your time for something else, and I will assume that Mark has had an opportunity to review them and will have an opportunity to respond to them either during this 10 minutes or the rebuttal.
Okay. There's two problems with not owning the land. Number one, you can't use the land for density purposes. And that's one of the questions I've asked Mr. Sekman to address. But number two, the site plan doesn't work unless you own all the land. You can't just assume this council's going to abandon right-of-way. There may be a public need demonstrated when the time comes to abandon. So I would ask you to carefully look at that issue. I think that's one of the most important things you're going to hear today. And I would, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a quick, too, I think in listening to your description of what your client owns in and around central Florida, I didn't hear any property in Paramore downtown.
Your Honor, the, our client has an equitable interest, meaning they are a contract purchaser of 812 North Paramore.
And 812, that's a lot?
Yes, Your Honor. Or, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then, I'm not aware that your client didn't respond to the RFP on this property, correct?
They considered it, but they would argue, and you'll hear this later, that the terms of the RFP were materially changed after it was granted, such that they would have responded had they known that this preference was on the table.
Anybody else have a question?
Mayor, I have a quick follow-up question for, for Scott on 812. When did...
Eight fourteen, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Eight fourteen, North Paramore?
Uh, South Paramore.
South Paramore. When did your, when did your client become the contract purchaser on that, on that lot? Was it, in fairness, if you want to think about this for a few minutes and respond to it in your rebuttal, this, the other question I would have is, did they enter into a contract to purchase it before or after the planning board meeting, and then before or after they've submitted their request for a hearing?
Definitely before the planning board hearing, or, yeah, the planning board meeting, I think was in October, mid-October. Definitely before that. But I'll confirm that out in rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the applicant, Invictus, your case in chief. You'll have 10 minutes as well.
Good afternoon. Richard Cavallieri with Invictus Development. I'm the guy who's the defendant on all the lawsuits that have been filed, and I am not an attorney. My address is 3212 Pleasant Lake Drive in Tampa, Florida. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, congratulate you on changing your process for the appeals. I've done well over 50 public hearings in my time in the development business, and there's not one other jurisdiction in Florida that has a process like yours where you can get held up in an appeal process almost without a doubt every time the jurisdiction listens to the testimony in a reasonable period of time after having been educated on that in prior periods and makes a decision. So I congratulate you on changing your process. One other thing, it's been 14 years since anything has happened on that site. Seventy-five families were displaced on that site who have not been able to come back to that location. So you can hear all the legal mumbo jumbo and the appeals about section 57 and 62 and whatever, but the bottom line is that this is housing for Paramore people who need of good, affordable, quality housing in that area. And we're going to build quality housing. It's going to be concrete block construction, hollow core plank between floors. We're going to have solid surface countertops, wood cabinets, plenty of amenities. We're going to have a lot of security, and it's a mixed income project. So it's for homeless people. We're going to have 40% of area median income residences. We're going to have 60% of median income residences, and we're going to have market rate residences. So we're going to have a mix of incomes on a property that leads to successful projects. It's also modern architecture. It's going to be a quality, good-looking project that the people of Orlando are going to be proud of. So don't lose sight of the fact of all these appeals and everything else that's happening. What we're really trying to do here is bring quality housing into Paramore. If you read studies about all the NIMBY issues, et cetera, and all these neighborhoods, and then they stick a nice quality development like this in an area that's been blighted, maybe what's called a recap, it improves the quality and increases the market value so that, of the land in those areas. So just be cognizant of the fact that this is really going to help the community. And the people that are here trying to knock this project down are doing it for self-serving purposes. Now, they're trying to get their projects funded and other parts of Orlando and knock this out of the loop. And it's been 14 years. I think it's about time that this area needs it. One other thing I wanted to address is security. I talked to the Orlando Police Department, and we're certainly willing to do the crime-free multi-housing program. You know, we'll ensure ample lighting. We'll ensure restricted access through cards with, at the doors and at the gates. We'll have camera security on the site so that, and, and their program is basically three phases, management training, SEPTED, which is crime prevention through environmental design, and we'll go through that training. We'll get, do what it needs to take to get that certification, and then we'll enforce that certification on the site. So I just want to make sure that you understand what we're really building here, and step back for a second and look at that versus all the other issues that people are trying to present here for you today. Thank you.
Paula Rhodes with Invictus Development, 211 Southwestland Avenue, Unit 2, Tampa, Florida 33606. I wanted to quickly address a few of the items. I know the city will do this in more detail, and I don't want to spend a lot of my time on it, but the density bonus was properly granted. An affordable housing certification was sought and granted, which allows the density bonus. It's one of the things in the local housing assistance plan that allows the City of Orlando and Orange County to participate in state housing funds. So that, that is a process. We followed the city's process. There is no issue with the density bonus. The parking, as it says in the staff report that was approved by the municipal planning board, will be revisited at the end of the first phase to determine whether in fact there is an issue. But it's fair to say, it's not just a question of people riding bicycles or walking or whatever. There is mass transit there. There is easy access to Sunrail. There are two bus stops right in front. There are so many ways of using mass transportation from this site that that is certainly a legitimate thing that is taken into account in this process. The city doesn't own the land. I just want to make a quick point because I want to let my lawyer talk about the zoning. He's better equipped to do that. But I just wanted to make the point that these roads are paper roads. There are no roads there right now. No one has been using them. No one has been relying on them. And the property is fenced. No one's been going through it for access. That's, that's a paper tiger. So I'll turn it over this time to Greg Lee, who will address with more legal precedent and so forth behind it than I could. Greg?
Thank you very much, Paula. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Greg Lee, 200 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32801. And I'll be brief as well. I just wanted to come up and touch on the issues of incompatibility and insufficiency related to zoning and future land use. You know, the city's professional staff analyzed the application through the sufficiency review process, the normal process that they go through, where several people analyze the application and either deem it in compliance or out of compliance. City staff had a finding, which was reported to you today, that it was in compliance. The application was in compliance with the growth management plan, the land development code, the CRA, Paramore neighborhood plan, design guidelines and development standards, as well as the, you know, the zoning for the, for the project. And so when you look at the underlying zoning prior to when the application was filed, there's a PD in place right now for a housing project. There's also an underlying future land use for multifamily. So we would like to agree, state our agreement with the city staff's review and analysis in the sufficiency review process, that the project is compatible. We disagree with the opposition and their statements that it's not, and we would hope that you would support this project and appreciate your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? So we'll save your two and a half minutes in case you need it in rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We will move to the respondent, city's case in chief, Mark Sekman, our city's zoning official and maybe assisted by Paul Lewis, the city's chief planning manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I would be putting on the case in chief of the city along with Paul Lewis. I'm going to have Paul come up and talk about the Paramore plan and also the comprehensive plan, since he's more knowledgeable on those issues than I. We did prepare a PowerPoint. We feel that it does address many of the questions that have been asked. Should I get started? I'm going to have the first two slides, and Paul's going to come up, and I'm going to come back up and talk a little bit more about...
Turn his mic up.
About the PD process. Start a little bit about the review of the whole thing. We did have our first meeting with the applicant August the 11th, and this was attended by many city staffers, city planning, transportation planning, urban design staff, CRA staff, and transportation engineering and real estate. Invictus did make an application soon after, and the staff reviewed it. And this was a very thorough review he gave this application. It was done by Jim Burnett, the project planner, Mary Stewart, Droji for comprehensive planning issues, Paul Lewis for compliance with the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan, and as well the comp plan, and John Rhodes for transportation planning, Doug Metzger for the CRA and urban design, David Barilla for downtown Orlando CRA issues, Jeremy Crow for the EMS and compliance, and also Audra Norderby for crime prevention through environmental design. The reason why I'm telling you this is, I just want to emphasize that we did do a complete and thorough review. It ended up with seven pages of conditions and four pages of informational, informational comments, and those are in your staff report. And now I'm going to ask Paul to tell you a little bit about the Paramore Comprehensive Plan and how this project addresses it.
Good afternoon. There's a slight height differential between Mark and myself. So, and then abundance of, and again, my name is Paul Lewis. I'm the chief planning manager for the City of Orlando. And for, for those that don't know, I was also the project manager for the city for the Paramore Comprehensive. Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan that we went through a couple of years ago. In an abundance of caution, I'm not sure if this is legal, would want me to do this exactly this way, but I'm going to go ahead and do it. I'd like to enter into the record for any future purpose for documents in their entirety, and later in my presentation, I'll explain why I want them to be in their entirety. And that is the Growth Management Plan, the city's Growth Management Plan, the Land Development Code in its entirety, the Downtown Orlando CRA Plan, redevelopment plan in its entirety, and the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan in its entirety. I'd also like to enter into evidence my resume, and I'll provide that to the clerk as we proceed. So, the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan really contains our vision for the neighborhoods that make up the Paramore community. It's based on healthy community design principles, and that plan provides strategies for improving economic development and job growth, community health, transportation options, housing, education, and info. The visioning process was conducted in 2014 as part of a HUD Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant with the intention of planning for sustainable transit-oriented development around our Sun Rail stations. The HUD grant emphasizes promotion of sustainable and inclusive growth, particularly in minority and in low-income neighborhoods along the entire Sun Rail route. After a year-long community visioning process with nearly 30 meetings, the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan was accepted by Orlando City Council on January 26, 2015. It's an important continuation and further refinement of the pathways for Paramore Initiative that we've been working on for over a decade. It's also considered to be an integral component of the Project DTO Advancing Downtown Orlando Initiative and the Associated Downtown Orlando CRA Redevelopment Plan. On September 21, 2015, the Orlando City Council adopted an amendment to the city's Growth Management Plan, which basically incorporated the Paramore Plan by reference. And I'm just going to read a couple of statements from that amendment. GMP Future Land Use Subarea Policy 6B.2 states, "The city shall prepare a long-term vision for the creation of a 21st-century Paramore neighborhood that is fully supportive of Sun Rail and downtown Orlando's and is built upon the principles of healthy community design. This vision contained in the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan shall be implemented throughout the planning period." The planning period is the 20 years that is set aside for the Growth Management Plan. GMP Future Land Use Subarea Policy S.6.14 states that the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan and its vision plan shall be utilized by the city as the foundation for directing efforts to preserve, revitalize, and redevelop the Paramore community. It goes on to say that there are certain action items that will be implemented by the plan. "Those projects shall be considered by the city officials in doing CIP, capital budget, departmental budgets, and special consideration shall be given to those projects that provide safe and affordable housing. It advances the healthy community design principles to promote social and environmental justice and to increase housing opportunities." Finally, that subarea policy lists catalyst projects, and it talks about the city should assemble a development team consisting of key staff members and community partners to develop a comprehensive strategy for marketing and incentivizing the development of catalyst projects recommended in the Paramore Plan. A density bonus would be considered an incentive. So the subject site is one of the catalyst projects described in the Paramore Plan. In the action plan, under Healthy Community Design Principle Number Four, Increase Housing Opportunities, two important strategies are articulated to establish a strategy to preserve and strengthen existing housing and promote new housing initiatives, and also reduce the stigma of affordable housing by supporting mixed income, mixed tenure, sustainable and healthy housing opportunities throughout Paramore. The action plan specifically states that the short-term action plan between the zero and five years from 2015, under the Healthy Community Design Principle Number Four, is to establish a mixed-income housing development on the Paramore Village site. So, from that perspective, I have to say, this is fully consistent with the Growth Management Plan and what we've been working towards for a number of years. Okay? I also want to address kind of a legislative policy issue, and that's the issue that was raised by the appellants about the discouraging of the concentration of affordable multifamily housing. And let me read the entire objective and the entire policy that's being referenced. "Throughout the planning period, the city shall develop and maintain policies and programs to discourage the concentration of affordable multifamily housing and to encourage mixed use and mixed income developments." And 2.2.1 basically says the same thing, and then it provides a list for the things that we're supposed to consider when we develop a housing development. Availability of public services, Mark's already addressed that, land use compatibility, he'll address it some more, impact on natural resources, transportation access and existing concentration of multifamily housing. So, in interpreting the legislative intent of Housing Objective 2.2 and Policy 2.2.1, it's important to understand it within the context of the entire Growth Management Plan. Okay? GMP Vision Statement says, basically it's the preamble of the GMP, "The city shall provide leadership to stimulate affordable housing demonstrations within new and existing neighborhoods throughout the city. The city will institute strong and directed housing policies to meet the very real and growing affordable housing needs of the community." Objective 2.3 states, "The city shall establish and support public-private partnerships that provide affordable housing." Housing Policy 2.4.4 states, "The city shall support and provide regulatory, financial, and other incentives to projects of medium-to-high-density, mixed-income, and mixed-use developments. Priorities shall be given to long-term attainable housing developments within proximity of major employment centers or near-public or mass transit, and which demonstrate architectural excellence, and which contribute to environmental sustainability." I think that this project does all of those things. In interpreting the legislative intent of Housing Objective 2.2 and Policy 2.2.1, it's important to read the language as a whole, and to discourage the concentration of affordable multifamily housing, and to encourage mixed use and mixed income developments. You have to read it all together. The proposed Paramore Oaks project is a mixed-income project, which consists of 80% income-restricted units and 20% market-rate units. It's also important for you to understand that there are no numerical or percentage goals, standards, or caps in the GMP, the Land Development Code, or the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan regarding concentration of affordable multifamily housing. Just as an aside, to provide some evidence, we have looked at the entire neighborhood. There are 3,449 housing units in Paramore. There are eight affordable housing projects totaling 806 units. 738 of those are income-restricted, 68 are unrestricted or market-rate units. So today, 21% of the residential units in Paramore are income-restricted. Based on our Growth Management Plan, Growth Projections Report, with all the known projects that will have affordable housing component, we think that the percentage will grow to about 27% in 2025 before dropping back to 24% in 2030 and 20% in 2045. So it's projected that the percentage of income-restricted units between 2016 and 2045 would remain virtually the same. And I will enter the record a lengthier description, and I'm not going to go into this chart right now, that will provide that information in greater detail. And then finally, I want to address the issue of gentrification and displacement. Now, these issues have been, were talked about at great length during the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan process, and we're also discussing them as part of a UCF Housing Committee that's looking at this as well. You know, when we start thinking about this, we need to ask the questions that we asked as part of the Paramore Plan. How do we accommodate future demand for market rate and affordable housing for the thousands of employees who want to move to downtown and be free of the reliance on automobile and live in a place that celebrates diversity? And how do we transform Paramore in a way that provides housing for residents that reside there now and want to come back to the neighborhood? And how do we transform Paramore into a place that is safe for children and families? I think that this project has all of the elements to do exactly that. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Mark and let him continue.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to try to answer some of the questions that are presented to us from the appellants. One other thing about the Growth Management Plan, this project is in the future land use designation of medium residential, residential medium intensity, which allows for R2B, R3B, R3C, and MXD-1. So any one of those could be a default zoning district and still be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The maximum dwelling units in the...
Mark, that's your 10 minutes, but I'm going to allow you to finish in that you are responding to the questions that were asked.
Okay, and that's what this rest of the presentation really does. The maximum dwelling units is 30 units to the acre, and that's before bonuses, and the COM Plan specifically says that before bonuses. So bonuses can go above that 30 units to the acre. And the proposed default zoning is R3C. With PDs, we don't rewrite the entire code in the PD ordinance. We have to have a default zoning that we could look at. Some things like allowable land uses, if somebody wanted to do a hair salon in this, we would look up in R3C and we'd say, "I'm so sorry, you can't do a hair salon." So instead of regurgitating the entire code in a PD ordinance, which would be about yay thick, we just use default zoning. So that's why we do that. Talk a little bit about the density bonus. They are requesting a density bonus. The requested units are 211 units. 187 would meet the future land use of 30 units to the acre, so they want to have about 24 bonus units. The Affordable Housing Code does allow us to go up from 30 units to the acre to a maximum 40 units to the acre with bonuses for R3C, and the request is for 33.2 acres, and that would be part of the process. Also, part of the process, as pointed out by the appellants, is that we have to do a neighborhood compatibility review, and we did such a review. As part of our review, one of the main things that we want to emphasize is that a maximum of two stories should be allowed adjacent to the single-family residential neighborhood areas, and that's what we did with the PD. To the south, it's the townhomes, which are two stories, and they're adjacent to existing single-family. Whoops. And also, to the west, the same thing. We required that only two-story townhomes could be there. So we feel that would be part of the neighborhood compatibility of the whole project. One other thing that the appellants did talk about as part of neighborhood compatibility, we want to make sure that the bonus units don't adversely affect the existing area for traffic. So we did a review on that. Overall, the total traffic for the whole project, all the units, is 1,376 trip ends per day. About 11% will be bonus units, and so 11% of the traffic, or about 155 trip ends, will be bonus unit traffic that will be affecting neighbors. These trip ends will be dispersed through the gridded streets. This project is not only like a dead-end subdivision where every bit of the traffic will have to be on one road, it could actually be dispersed through the neighborhood going in different directions. So even if all the trips go out on South Paramore Avenue, none of them will go across a road tube at one time. Some will go to the north, some will go to the south, probably about 50/50. We feel that this is a de minimis increase in the traffic caused by the bonus units. Schools, nobody brought up schools, but when anybody asks for a bonus, we look to see if there's adequate schools in the area. A lot of areas in Orlando do not have adequate schools, but that's not the same for Paramore. Paramore does have sufficient school capacity now, as identified by Orange County Public Schools in October 2016. That's mainly because of the renewed PS8 community school, which is under construction and should be open by 2017. So schools will have adequate capacity for schools for this project with the bonus. Some discussion was about the streets. Yes, we did use the paper streets that are out there in the density calculation that allowed for more units. But when you look at the two streets in question, America Street is a paper street. In other words, there is no road there. If you went out to America Street, you couldn't drive on it because there's not a road, it's just a paper street. Matter of fact, it's fenced in. So we feel that either through an encroachment agreement or a partial abandonment would be a reasonable request, so we added this area in the density calculation. An encroachment agreement possibly be this area here, as I'm outlining it, and maybe a full dead abandonment could be considered in this area right here. Same thing with McFaul Avenue. This is a little bit different in that both sides are owned by the CRA. There is no street here. It's also a paper street. It's also fenced in, so an abandonment would be a reasonable request, and so we added this area in the density calculation. Talk a little bit about PDs. PDs are voluntary. The only reason why an applicant would request a PD, or one of the main reasons why they request a PD, is to get some kind of relief from the existing code. A lot of times, we have good projects that come before us, but if we try to stuff it into a general code, it doesn't work. So we usually go with the PD route to provide that flexibility. In this case, the flexibility was needed for parking, was needed for setbacks and maximum height, and also for the bonus request. This chart here is for the setbacks. It's also in the staff report. It shows where the project is a little bit above some of the heights and some of the setbacks, and that will be taken care of through the PD process. The code does identify that PDs are to promote flexibility of design, and that's what they're for. That's what they're for in every city I've worked in, to provide some kind of relief from the strict requirements of the code. We have, and this is a guess, over 100 PDs in the city. I would say maybe over 200 if you throw in the amendments. And part of the process in a PD is a little bit of an exchange. We get superior design through the project in exchange for a little bit of help with the zoning code. So that's what happens with all PDs, including this one. Also, as you probably all know, PDs are site plan-specific. They're also project-specific. So even though it has a default zoning, somebody couldn't say, "Oh, shucks, let me do a brand-new project." It has nothing to do with what was been approved. They'd have to go through an amended PD through public hearings and board process. So they are site plan and project-specific. Parking was brought up. This property is not meeting our code for parking, and that is correct. It's about 90 spaces, or about 24% less than what the code requires for parking. So what do we do about that? Well, we are concerned, as always, about any kind of parking problem. So we looked at this to see what can happen to mitigate these parking problems. And in this particular area, Paramore, it is very bicycle and pedestrian-friendly. It has a grid pattern of streets, so there's many different ways that you can get around. It actually has a walk score that's very high. It's very high for walkability, has good transit, and it's very bicycle, bike-friendly. Also, the other ways to get around without a car is limo. Limos locate about a half mile to the north, and from the limo line, you can get to downtown Sun Rail and the Link's Station. So that's another reason why you don't need to have a car in this particular project. If you don't want to walk, you can take Link's Route 8, and that stops right in front of the front door of this project. That also goes to the Link's Central Station and Sun Rail. It also goes south to SeaWorld, Nine Drive, and all those job opportunities to the south. It has excellent service of a 15-minute headway, which is very good for Orlando. We mentioned as part of the trade-off with the PD, to provide that flexibility, we want superior urban form. And we feel we're getting at with the architecture in this particular project, they have to build it something to this magnitude and that quality. Another picture of the architecture, those are some of the things that we feel we're getting as a trade-off, working with them with the bonus, the parking, and also some of the setbacks. As part of the urban form, we actually have six pages of urban design conditions in the PD that address streetscape design, address architecture, tree preservation, mechanical equipment screening, signage, and townhomes are also rear-loaded. So it does have 33 townhomes. They're rear-loaded like we like them, so the front of the townhome looks like a house, and you don't see all that garage door from the street. So those are some of the things that we felt was a trade-off for some of the things that we're offering with the bonus and the parking and some of the setback in heights. So in summary, we feel this complies, the project complies with the COM Plan, it complies with the Land Development Code through the PD process, it has a justifiable bonus, and parking is addressed through the PD and also by the nearby transit.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. What I'm going to do at this point is open it up for public testimony, and I have a number of cards that are the people that have already spoken or associated with either the appellants or the applicant or the city, but I do have, I believe, four that may be residents or not associated one way or another with any of the parties. And then Dr. Spooney, Clinton Salter, and Ralph Armstead.
Once again, I'm Madeline Young, and I live at 814 West Concord Street, and I'm here representing Arlington Concord Neighborhood Association. I am so passionate about this project that I decided to write my statement out, so I'll be reading it versus trying to, I don't want to get off track. I purchased my home 23 years ago due to the promise that Mayor Glenda Hood had given several of the homeowners in our neighborhood, and that promise was our investment into the Paramore neighborhood would be the beginning of the revitalization of Paramore. That did not happen. The majority of us are still residing in the neighborhood. My son, daughter, and two of their friends purchased homes in my neighborhood. I read petitions opposing the development of Paramore Oaks. I'm not a lawyer, therefore I will speak from the human component of this issue. We view the Paramore Oaks development as a true catalyst to the revitalization of this community, a promise that decades are overdue. Residents in this community deserve decent and quality multifamily affordable housing. Paramore Oaks will encompass even more than that. There will be market rate units, buildings for seniors, as well as few transitioning units. The development will give... The development will give the residents in Paramore a choice of living in housing that is of the highest standards, not a slap of paint on the outside and calling it a day. For rental property owners who fear the competition, the solution is simple. Invest in your properties and bring them into compliance with quality housing. The owners of a quadruplex on my street, it's at eight oh four West Concord Street, they did exactly that, and now they are reaping the rewards of good tenants. Rental property owners, police your properties, that that will be in the form of evictions. In our neighborhood, which is Concord, Arlington, there are rental property owners who truly appreciate our concern for their properties as well as our own. Therefore, they evict residents that harbor criminals and individuals that disturb the peace and safety of the community. And finally, moving this project forward will also squelch the nasars that believe residents of Paramore are being displaced. This development is the beginning of a bright future for Paramore neighborhood, and please do not allow a few individuals with self-interest to delay this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jose, I need you to settle down just a little bit and be respectful of the speaker. Just settle down, okay? Just settle down. I understand that, but let us get through the process, and let's be respectful of everybody, okay? Settle down. Okay, Dr. Spoonie?
Good afternoon, Mayor Daya and council members. My name is Dr. Robert M. Spoonie. I reside at forty-one thirty-eight Brookmire Drive in Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-three-seven. I'm not an attorney, but I am the pastor of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Institutional Church, located at five thirty-five West Washington Street, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-oh-one. Mount Zion is the oldest black church in Orlando, having celebrated one hundred and thirty-six years of existence in April of this year. We were founded in eighteen eighty in Paramore. I'm also the son, I call myself a son of Paramore, in that I was born at ten-twenty-and-a-half West Bentley Street in a shotgun house. And the house, by the way, even in its dilapidated condition today, still stands and is occupied. I stand to support this project of Paramore Oaks. I believe that this project will provide much-needed quality and affordable housing for the Paramore District. The rates that I have seen are excellent. Urban renewal often results in displacement of the indigenous population of a community. However, this project will allow the indigenous population to remain and remain with a sense of pride. As you all know, the Paramore population has decreased over the years, and that's been primarily as a result of what I call a reduction in the quality of life in that district. I believe, and most of my five hundred-plus congregation agree, that this project will have a great and positive impact on the Paramore District for the following reasons. It will boost, if you will, be a boost to the local economy, since many of the new residents and residents will utilize local businesses that are in the Paramore District. Number two, it has the potential to have a positive impact on the district's homeless population, and it will increase the population of the district in general. And finally, it can aid and assist in lowering the crime rate in Paramore due to the improvement of the quality of living and lifestyle, due to improved security, and the establishment of the new neighborhood watch groups that will come out of the new subdivision. Thank you for your time this afternoon. May God bless you and keep you, as always, my prayer, as you decide a future for our community and implement an already approved growth management program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spoonie. Clinton Salter. There you are. And is Ralph here?
He's right there.
Yep, okay. Clinton and then Ralph.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Enges, Mayor, rest of the board, council, rather. Thank you a lot for bringing such a noteworthy project, though contested. I think one of the biggest things over the last fifty years of my life, which is, I got to tell you, that's most of my life, okay? You see a lot of white, but that's most of my life. I was born there in Paramore as well, on South Street, Dr. Smith's clinic. And like many people have, a understanding of what the historic roller coaster has been for Paramore. I became an advocate of Fair Housing Act and affordable housing some years after, having co-founded a community development corporation that created seven hundred and twenty-five units of affordable housing, first ever, well, in fifty years of the southwest portions of the city going toward Orange County, near Pine Hills and Metro West. Very needed projects, very unheralded, very much fitting the concept of decent, fair housing, quality housing. Those are things that have to be the overarching mandates, the things that you look at in creating the types of projects that you approve, or shall I say, approving the types of projects that come before you. This project meets that. I've seen it. I've looked at it in comparison to other projects that came up. And reading through some of those profiles, I saw that it maintained only a small percentage of market rate housing, which means that, for, I guess, toward in perpetuity, there will be a level of a maintenance of affordability in an area that is depleted with decent housing over the years, as Reverend Spoonie just mentioned. But I want to make sure, though, is that as we look at how we create the concept, the context of stabilizing community, that those projects meet just that sustainability in housing, that they meet a kind of, I mean, you've got to allow a developer and landowner to profit in some degree. You've got to, but they've also got to meet what we as a community desire to see in fair, decent housing offerings for our residents and neighbors in our communities that are seeking so much. As I came in today, I heard about violence. I heard about some of the things that are wrecking our community. Housing inability to have decent housing is one of those things, or the inability to get it, one of those things that contribute toward crime, that contribute toward, you know, those kinds of desperate moves because it fosters poverty, fosters low income, people without hope. As you start bringing in housing stock that helps people raise their level of thinking, Mayor, you start achieving the aims of what these kinds of projects, when approved, get an opportunity to create for this city. A balance in opportunity, a balance in the provision of fair housing, decent opportunities for people. And we hope to generate even more upward opportunities. I like to call it vertical mobility kind of thing, where people are trained to meet the goals and needs of twenty-first century job markets in central Florida, which we become like a technology and silicone east, if you were, as it were, for the opportunities of the technology corridors. So we have to understand that many of our residents, when given a proper opportunity, will be able to leave poverty forever and be able to be gainful and, I think, complimentary citizens, espousing all the things that we want them to be about, having a great opportunity, a fair opportunity for success. And that's so important. So to me, beyond whose project it is, beyond, you know, who's against it, who's for it, I think to me it's about what is it doing for our residents? And as you approved the opportunity for some of our youth to come back into the Lower Endune Park area and bring those families with them to practice and play their games at that field, Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Enges, I think what you didn't allow was that for our community to, again, to retake and to regrasp what new urbanism hopes that we do, which is live, work, play communities. You know, we take full advantage of all those natural resources and housing and the quality of great parks that we have in our city, and institutions and things like good schools and great hospitals, and a police department that actually works with our community to bring about justice, to bring about fair opportunities, equal opportunities. So I thank you for being the kind of council that is moving forward, not just for one side of town, but for all sides of town, for all of its residents, to be meaningfully represented. And that's what democracy is about. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Ralph, it's been a long time since you've appeared before council.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it has been a long time. And usually, I'm on the other side, but today I came here to give my support to the project. Oh, address, five eleven West South Street, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-oh-five. I am an attorney-at-law. I was rare on eight fourteen South Paramore Street. I saw when the town hall was erected, and I saw when it experienced demise. And there are a lot of issues. But I've been, by way of explanation, I've been involved in Paramore for a very long time in a multiplicity of ways. I was low-income housing advocate for the city of Orlando, the first one under the Sodowsky Act, and many other things. And I would note the fact that I'm a member of the Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation, which is the fourteenth largest corporation in Orange County dealing with affordable My primary thing is, Mr., I know, when we were doing the Paramore project in consensus, I told Reverend Spoonie, one of the things that I was concerned about is where, when you look at the residential component, where is it that lends itself to housing? And it's right there in that corridor where you're talking about, the Paramore project. I don't know what consideration has been given to the fact of the Hope Six Project, that incomplete Hope Six Project that's going to, supposedly, whenever they get the money, they're going to have some houses built. But nonetheless, it's, my, I'm going to focus upon what my main motivation is, because I didn't bring any notes. I see this as a wonderful opportunity for the youth in our community to take advantage of this great K through eight education institution that's being erected. We need, and I was concerned about the fact that there would not be any, quite candidly, black students to go there. I was concerned about the fact that Jones High School population is under, is under demand, and this is a great opportunity to the extent we can bring in this kind of project, and we can have other infield housing that's going to be supportive. In a day and age where I'm looking at the twenty-two billion dollars that allegedly going to be sent for choice schools and all of that, and that whole emphasis upon choice schools, I don't have anything against them, but we're going to have a real great traditional public school here, and it's going to be a lot of people who would ordinarily want to go to choice schools, they're going to be wanting to go to this great school that Orange County School Board is putting up. And so I think for that reason alone, we'll be able to have, fill that gap about the school system. And we will also be able to, once things are up and going, bring in resources to the residents there, many of which, the people over there, they talked about some of the things they have in mind, but I can see other things that you could do to enhance the life and betterment of the residents who are going to be living there. So I don't have any things, but I'm very positive about it. I heard one of the opponents made the statement about that they were concerned about whether or not people from anywhere in USA could come in and take advantage of the situation. But I would hope that it's going to be some attention and focus put on people who are and who have lived in the area to get initial consideration. But be that as it may, I'm all for it, and I look forward to working with everybody there because I have worked with many, like, tenants who were being evicted in public or private housing, thousands over the years. I understand about, you can be homeless, the implications of homelessness. You could be at work today, lose your job, and you are homeless. And we got to look at this thing and dealing with this whole, from a holistic perspective, the tenants there and the ones who will be coming. And I'm quite certain we're going to do that holistic approach to all of the housing. And once again, I endorse the project.
Thank you, Ralph.
Good afternoon. My name is Vincena Kennedy. I reside at eight twelve Randall Street, three-two-eight-oh-five. I am a product of Paramore. Before it was demolished, my mother and stepfather lived, we was raised at seven-seventy-five Weaver Court, Paramore Village. We owned it businesses at seven-oh-seven South Paramore, and we had restaurants, which was known as the Dixie Doodle, and we had a tavern, which was known as the Green Parrot, which I must say no longer exists. I am, now is the time. I feel like we're standing in the middle, Mayor, and to the councilmen's, of a battle of people telling us what's best for us, who do not even live in the area. But that's not the case. I live there. I live it where I see it every morning and every evening, not by what somebody's telling me, but what I see every day. I've raised, along with my husband, three beautiful children. My daughter is an RN. My son is into real estate and marketing. And the baby girl is struggling, and she's there with us. The point is, now is the time, Mayor and councilmen's. That property that you're talking about, where my mother and where a lot of my friends used to live, have been empty now for over fourteen years. There's a lot of other properties around the area have been empty for many, many years. And not once have they ever tried to redevelop it, to improve it, to be something other than the interest of making money off it. And I know people are in business to make money, but there's also a lot of suffering going on in my community, where people are in desperate need of housing, affordable housing. We're in a community and an area where it has been replenished. It's a skeleton. How much longer do we have to continue to suffer and not be... How much longer do we have to continue to suffer and not be able to keep our heads up and be proud of the Paramore that I'm from? And I am. I am very proud of it. Time is gonna bring on a change, and now is the time for the change. And we welcome the project of the redevelopment. We are growing, and we will continue to grow. And I wanna say thanks, even though we have different of opinion, we won't always agree on everything, but we do need it to be settled, for people can want to come back in our area and live in an area that they would be literally proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Watkins.
Uh, I stand in support, well, I'll give my address, James Watkins, fifteen forty-three New Amsterdam Way, and I stand in support of the, uh, Paramore Oaks Project. And I truly believe that we all can agree that affordable housing is paramount, yeah, as far as the Paramore area. Uh, the property that we are discussing, if it is used for any other purpose, it will cause, uh, gentrification. And this is not the answer, because what we're doing is moving poverty from one side of a city to another area. I truly believe that the answer is to develop our low-income areas and turn them into thriving Once you change a community, you change the mindset of the people. Once the people are changed, then you have a community that contributes to the entire If you can catch a vision of taking a community that is in dire need and turn it into a model community, I'm, I'm talking about with infrastructure, uh, beautification, a safe community, uh, for instance, the Main Street Project that was implemented in St. Petersburg, a crime-infested community. Uh, the community got involved along, uh, along with the city, and converted that community into a model community where, uh, there's businesses which create jobs, adds to the economy, uh, they even brought in a college which educate the community. And there's other, uh, they have a museum in the community. Crime has disappeared, um, drugs has also diminished. So the thing is, that same model can be implemented and mimicked right here in Orlando, but we have to catch the vision. But if we continue to, uh, ignore that we, uh, we do have a, uh, tight-knit community, but the thing is, what are we gonna do with it? We can't continue to pretend that it doesn't exist. And the thing is, we're dealing with the lives of humans, human beings who deserve better living conditions. Some of the houses, the homes that they're living in in Paramore are below substandard, uh, conditions and in bad need of repair. So the thing, what we, uh, I believe I heard one of the speakers say that we have an opportunity, but if we don't take advantage of this, then, uh, it's on us. But if we take advantage of the opportunity that we have now and make this a community that is thriving, that, 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 it, that's adding to the, uh, the economy, also, um, giving people in the community jobs, then I think, uh, Orlando will be talked about, and buddy dyer, you have a feather in your cap. So with that, um, I truly feel that, uh, we, we ought to take advantage of this, and I, I, I understand that, you know, there's gonna be oppositions, but, uh, we have to look at, uh, human life over profit. So, um, that's basically what, uh, I have to say. Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, give my opinion.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jose.
I'm Mexico City, and I live in Orlando. Yeah, I live, I live in a lot of places, you know. And I don't have a suit today, 'cause I don't want to. Like, I could come here and bring a nice suit today, you know, just like the lawyers that are coming here trying to represent the Paramore community, that they don't live there. I mean, how are you going to get paid to tell me that you know what we go through, when you don't know what it is to see a child with no shoes? When you don't know what it is not to have money to go to the store, because there's no money there? When you have to deal with it, so-called arid housing that Mr. Correja provided where there's no heat, the roof falling down, and you got fifty drug dealers that he even called the cops on, because after he got that deposit, he takes that money and puts them out. You know, Mohammed Lufti, they used to go home to kill Paramore, but what did he do for Paramore? Paramore's been exploited, exploited. Even the store owners are not even from there. But then you wanna talk about the CRA and the funds that are always saving the community like the Magics. We're always taking from Paramore, from, from the people that live there, to give to other people that are in trouble. And we did that for the recension, and I had to put up with it, and it was nothing. You know why? The people of Paramore are very smart. We're not dumb, we're smart. Now, what we bought it for Regina, we bought it for her, because we know she knows what it is to walk from school. She knows what it is to see a community that is deprived of educated housing. See, I have to come here and, and, and be looked at this wild guy, but Paramore gave me everything, gave me my first business that you gave it to me when I did the Amway Center, and it made me proud. Paramore is a nice place, and I love Paramore. And I'm from Puerto Rico, and you can say, whoa, you know, why is this Puerto Rican guy over here coming to talk about Paramore? But I love Paramore, and I don't wanna be rude or anything, but that was called Vietnam, and it was called Vietnam because it was a bad place, okay? And it was threw down, and it's time to fight crime, it's time to, to let all of these trials and all these rich people are here coming over here that they don't even live in Paramore. And then they hire lawyers to tell them, and then they hire all these companies to tell them what we go through. Why don't you just guys take the time and go down there and see what we go through? Why? Because you get scared, you have to call the police, I don't wanna walk around y'all to speak. But you know what? We put a stamp in there now, so now there's money to be made, so now there's money to be fighting for. But when before, that empty land was there, and neither Mohammed Lufti, nor either Cowherd, or nor either George, Papa Giorgio, that I know them personally, they didn't file an application, because it was a recension. But now Regina wants to do something for us, and now we got all this fighting, like we don't know. But you know what? Before you guys go to bed tonight, or you get on your Mercedes, then know that there's children that don't have potato chips. Every day I go to the store and I see them kids, and I, I buy stuff for them, Regina. Regina, I love Paramore. And I'm not gonna sit down here and see all these fights about a project that is going to benefit Paramore, that is going to bring some arid cooking housing when the slum land lost, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it here, the slum land lost, that all they do is take money so they can buy Porsches, and they, they don't do nothing, got to go. It's time to put arid housing, so we can leave them all out there, so the kids can go to the nice school building, and Paramore can look like a place. There's no food in Paramore, two or three places now. We already closed Paramore, and, and by your information, boss number eight doesn't go to Paramore anymore, it goes to Wells Landing, so you learn about that, okay? So, you know, the people that came here today came here to express that that piece of property has been a eyesore, right? It's been a eyesore. You have a nice park there, residing park, you know, sailing park, which I really like that part. And then, uh, Daisy had a Wells Landing, and that, that, that guy couldn't get the money. So we have a company here that has some interest in doing something, and now we have to go to all these processes, when we know it's gonna be the outcome here. You see, sometimes I come to this, this council meeting, and I think I waste my time, because sometimes you guys are gonna do it anyhow, without people telling you enough. They said, don't deal. But you know, when I see a couple of lawyers here from the Magics, I don't know what the heck they doing in Paramore, 'cause this is not definitely a Magics project, the Magics already got what they wanted to from us. We got winning anything. You know, it's enough, you know, we got to do something with Paramore. We got to fix that place up, so we can see some type of housing in there, and we can see people walking around Paramore, uh, 'cause it's been a lot of murders in there. We got people sleeping underneath four oh eight, I don't know if you ever gone by there and seen that, sleeping underneath four oh eight about not even a hundred free for when you're all trying to develop this. I mean, to me, that's, that's kinda contradicting. But you know, I could be look at this bad guy or this guy that they have, but I, Paramore gave me a chance. Paramore made me a business owner, and I did a statement, and I employed fourteen people from Paramore. Paramore is yours to fix. So, I know you're just gonna pass this, I'm gonna sit down, and I know you're gonna pass this, and I know these people are gonna do that, and I know Correja's gonna go back their home, and you don't have anything to do about it. But now he's feeling what I've been feeling here in this city for the last six or seven years, that sometimes things are the way they done, and it has worked for you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, it has worked for you.
Jose, wrap it up for me, please.
Well, how much time I got?
You've already used five minutes.
All right, well, that's what, what I wanted to tell you, that we need something done with the housing in Paramore. So I really don't care who gets it or not, let's just move on with this, and yet it's built, because people are sleeping underneath four oh eight.
Thank you. Okay, the rest of the public hearing appearance request cards that I have, I believe, are lawyers or principals related in one way or another to the, either the applicants, the, um, appellant's, or the city. So is there anybody that turned in a blue card? I don't, Valerie, do you have one in? I don't think I have it. Come on up. Valerie Monday. Do we have one over there?
I think she was under the neck, on the Paramore order.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm just gonna speak briefly. Um, back in nineteen ninety-seven, oh, my address, Valerie Monday, five two six Cocoa Lane, Orlando. Um, I am a civil engineer by trade, and I am an affordable housing developer of the area directly south of, uh, the project, Paramore Oaks. I developed fifteen units, single-family homes, uh, on McFaul, from Gore Street up to Conley, and, uh, there were three on the Paramore side. Um, when we did that, the charge, uh, and we, we were partners with the city, with the ship and home funds, and our charge was, uh, mixed, uh, income development. And what we did is, we recruited people around the city who were interested in, in being a part of the revitalization, this is back in nineteen ninety-seven, the revitalization of the Paramore area that was getting excited, and everyone was talking about it. Um, so what happened is, we put quality development in there, we promised them a, a beautiful home, quality development, we gave it to them, there's very little turnover, those people are still there, their children have graduated from, uh, high school and have gone on to college, and this is a, uh, they, I just heard, fourteen years. Fourteen years ago, this has happened. What happened, though, we also promised them that there would be revitalization in the area. Many of the residents came up to the, uh, big grand opening at, at the, uh, Paramore Village, the Wells Landing Project, and everyone was excited. There were fifteen families that were excited about seeing revitalization in Paramore. We promised that to them, they did the heavy lifting, because that area was probably the most crime-ridden area of the Paramore area. They did the heavy lifting, very little turnover, nobody left, very few people. And so what, what happened is, we asked them to stay, they stayed. We asked, and, and what we wanted to give them and promised them is they would see revitalization of the area. That did not happen. I'm a proponent of the Paramore Oaks Project, because what it's gonna do, is it's gonna elevate the property values of the homeowners that are there that stayed there, okay? What it, what it's going to do is allow their project, their properties to be in demand. Uh, and it's important that we give something back to them, because we've left them, uh, there to maintain this area in a vacant, uh, area. We did Hope Six, Hope Six came in, that was great, but we promised more, and more wasn't given. This is an opportunity for them to see that revitalization that they invested in that never came. So I'm a proponent of this activity, and, and, um, I hope it goes through, because I see the architecture, architecture is key, and it's important, I see the quality that's going into this project, and I really hope that we move forward, so thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, I'll extend that again. I know that some people may have turned cards in on some of the hearings that are yet to come. If anybody else wants to speak now. Okay, then we're gonna go back to rebuttal, so we'll go with Mr. Cowherd, then Madison Hollow, Invictus, and the city. Five minutes each.
Mark Lippman, Lippman Lobbs, is four seven six seven, New Broad Street, Orlando, three two eight one four, representing Mr. Cowherd. Um, again, going through the rules as, uh, Mr. Kyle Shepherd and I talked about, um, I'm gonna give my objection. So first, uh, again, we object to the procedure that's in place, um, we would object to, uh, Mr. Sekman's PowerPoint, which he prepared, uh, and the question we have for him is, how does the new, uh, PD justify changes to the old PD, which was from two thousand nine, the Wells Landing PD, uh, which was approved? There's nothing that's changed substantially, uh, to justify having the new PD, uh, put into place. Uh, further, uh, there's nothing presented about the public right of way, um, that was given to the public, and it's just being dismissed as a paper trail, a, a, a paper road. Um, even though it is a paper road, the reason we have rules in place is to follow those rules, and by just dismissing the fact that, uh, those, uh, numbers were affected by using, uh, land that wasn't owned by the city, certainly should be part of the consideration that the council has today. Uh, further, there, we object to Mr. Sekman's, uh, idea about the encroachment agreement or partial abandonment idea. Um, as far as those ideas, uh, he's giving that as presentation to the council today, but they should have been, uh, as part of the consideration when the original plan was developed, and they weren't, uh, given as today's presentation, now they're giving the idea that, uh, they'll either use the, uh, an encroachment agreement or partial abandonment, but nothing's in place for that. Nothing's been actively done to do that, uh, those two ideas, there's nothing that's been presented by, uh, Mr. Sekman regarding that. Um, and also, the other objection we had was, um, essentially, my client, uh, so you all know, isn't, uh, trying to throw a wrench into development of this land, what he's trying to do is, is show that what is being presented to the council, first of all, uh, doesn't comply with, uh, the way a PD should be presented. We've, and, and I suggest and strongly urge the council to please read our petition and opposition. The petition and opposition outlines the various issues that we have found with the, um, uh, the findings of the city, all the reports, everything that's been done, and none of those things have been addressed. There's, uh, the, the idea that, uh, we're just gonna sweep all the issues that we've discovered, that we've presented it as, as ultimate facts, are just being thrown away. Uh, if they could be addressed, if they could be changed, if they could be fixed, certainly we would urge the council to make those suggestions. But at this point, none of those things have happened, and because this isn't a plan that, or an ordinance that should pass, uh, because it is not complete, uh, as the rules suggest, we would urge the council not to pass this ordinance, uh, and, and with the realization that we want the revitalization of this area, of course we want the revitalization of this area. It would behoove my client to have revitalization of this area, because then it helps everybody in the city. But the way the revitalization needs to be done has to be through a process that's been created by the city, and that process is being short-changed today. Uh, first, by the passage of an ordinance that allows the council to make this decision, the council, again, for the record, owns the property, so to say that you're sitting here as impartial, uh, the, the judge of this, uh, process, um, is hard to take, because you have a vested interest. And again, one of the things that you can do as a council is to send this back to a hearing officer, and we would ask the council to consider that, but certainly don't that. But certainly, don't pass this ordinance. Don't allow this ordinance to go through, even with, uh, you, conditions, which is one of the things you can also do, is pass the ordinance with conditions. We think that it's not right yet to, uh, have the passage due to the issues that we've brought up as ultimate facts and that have not been addressed adequately or at all, uh, from everything that we've heard today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to, um...
Can we ask questions?
You can ask questions.
Sure.
Mr. Ortiz.
Mr. Lippman. Mr. Lippman, I, I have a question for you. Because I, I've heard you talking about all the technical aspects of this particular project, but there's, there's a concern I have. What are you considering in terms of quality of life that this project is gonna offer, bring human dignity, uh, uh, people from this particular area who, as you said, for the past fourteen years have not seen anything there, having an opportunity for the value of the property to go up, to, to living conditions that are meaningful? Are you against that at all?
No. And, and it's interesting that you'd pose that particular question. The way you're presenting that to me, and, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're saying that we're trying to stop progress. We're trying to put, uh, a kibosh...
No, I'm trying to figure out what is it that you guys want because what I'm hearing you talk about is about the, uh, PD, about the, the technical aspects of the development, which Mr. Sekman pretty much, uh, presented, that we're in tune with, with the, uh, with the vision plan. But you guys are still objecting to that. So my question is, this is something that is gonna help that community tremendously. I mean, it's gonna change the, the way of living in that particular area, which should be more significant than anything else in terms of prosperity for, for people. So what is, is, in, in your mind, why should we hold this? I mean, why should we step back from, from this?
Well, it, we're, we're not asking, um, to step back from a project. We're not asking to step back from revitalization. What we're asking to do is to step back from this particular plan as presented. Because as presented, and yes, it, it does address the technicality issues. And, uh, you're going off of what's been presented by Mr. Sekman. But we've also made the presentation of ultimate facts. And again, we've provided those affidavits to the council. We've provided the information as to the reasons why my, my clients feel that this is not something ripe for development at this time, based on the technical aspects of it. If those things could be addressed adequately in another plan by another developer or the same developer, certainly my client is gonna step back and say, "We want to help the city of Paramore." But, and, and you've heard a, a, a whole bunch of testimony today about, uh, what the citizens of Paramore want. My client wants the same thing. But what they're not considering is that if you are going to give something, uh, as part as a, a presentation, an application, you have to follow the rules.
But let me, let me interrupt you there. So you, you're telling me that if we do it, that what we're planning to do is not gonna bring the quality of living that we're looking for to, for the residents of Paramore? Is that what you're telling me?
I have absolutely not said that at all.
Therefore, therefore, okay. So we're going back to the same subject. So what you're saying is you don't agree with the technical as, aspect of this particular procedure. Therefore, we should step back and wait until, according to what you're presenting, this is done in the proper fashion.
Well, i- if, if you, uh, take a, a look at Commissioner Ortiz, specifically on what we've addressed in our objections. Uh, we're, we're not saying that we wanna hold back any citizen from Paramore. We're not saying we wanna hold back any citizen from Orlando. We want investors. Certainly, as I said, stated at the beginning, the idea is for the entire city to flourish because then all the residents will do better. But in anything you do, anything you apply for, if there are rules and parameters set out and everybody's required to follow those same rules, why are we treating this group differently?
We're following the rules.
Well, it's our position that they're not being followed. We've outlined specifically why they're not being followed. We've outlined specifically, um, the, the differences...
One more question. How, how does this affect you or Mr. Callard? I mean, personally, how is this affecting you guys?
Sure. We, we outlined that at the beginning of the presentation, um, i- i- for the, uh, ten minutes. And if I may answer the question, and, and hopefully I don't go over, uh, the time that I've been allotted, um, the right to enjoyment of his property as an owner, uh, part of the traditional lot-and-block la- land pattern of downtown Orlando will be adversely affected for the contrast of the non-traditional multifamily layout.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
Please give me your own, your own version. I, I, you're, don't, don't... I understand that, that that's reading. Give me your own version. Tell me, tell me, you know, simple semantics here. Why, why is this affecting you?
You, the, the council's going to allow this new development to come in. And it, it's really shiny. It's really pretty. And we're hearing all these nice things about how it's gonna be affordable housing. But only, uh, twenty percent of it is gonna be regular housing. Eighty percent of it is going to be affordable housing. And if you go through what the city has planned with the other developments coming through, you're now gonna be looking at, um, over approximately eight hundred other authority housing with duplicate building schemes.
How is this affecting you?
Oh, is my client, it, it's gonna...
How is this affecting your client?
Sure. And, and...
Because it seems like the people, which is the ones who are supposed to be concerned about this, they're all happy about this. So how is this affecting the community?
And I, I've, I've outlined it several times and I'll, I'll be happy to say it again. You're putting in housing, uh, first of all, the, you're, you're going to increase parking that's not been adequately addressed. And, um, Mr. Baker, I think adequately addressed that. And we join in him, uh, and with him, uh, for what he said, that you're, you're calling the parking, um, you're saying it's, it's biking compatible and all these other things. But, um, you, the parking is gonna cause an issue. Um, the increase in, uh, the use of, uh, resources is gonna become an issue. And, uh, it's our position that this isn't gonna do anything except lower the standards of the community as it's presented now. And, and you, you have to understand where I'm coming from. They're developing something here that doesn't adequately address... So you, you're bringing in, let's say, another eight hundred people for, uh, affordable housing. But is it actually affordable housing or is it gonna increase the crime? Is it gonna increase all these other issues? When the city certainly could have addressed things about crime with, uh, cameras in various, uh, areas. There's other, uh, things that the city could have looked at versus allowing this project to come in to improve the area.
We're doing it. We're doing it. We're doing that. We're implementing, uh, multi, uh, crime-free multi-housing, SEPTIT, which is, I can vouch for that because I'm naturally certified in SEPTIT. I tell you, if they're bringing SEPTIT, I'm, I'm very impressed. And I think this is gonna be something that's really gonna turn around that community. And I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not a prophet or anything like this, but I totally believe that this is gonna help diminish or, uh, deter crime in, in ways that we're gonna be very happy with.
If, if there could be an example that has been presented by, uh, Invictus of where they can have turned around crime versus, uh, uh, doing low-income housing in other areas, then certainly we would welcome it. Again, uh, you, you have to agree with, and my client wants to revitalize the area. He wants to see the improvement, not as it's been presented, though. Because what this plan is going to do is not, in our opinion, and based on everything that we've provided, uh, as far as our ultimate facts, is not going to help the community as everybody suspects. We believe that it's going to, uh, actually cause problems, more issues for the community. And because of those additional issues that still haven't been addressed by our petition and opposition, uh, we're looking at now having to deal with, uh, even a further drop in housing and a further drop in price. And we have those concerns that have not, I, and I, I don't mean to be redundant, but we presented our opposition. Nothing in that opposition has been addressed today. Nobody's gone line item by line item or, in, in totality, saying, "We agree that you, you're correct, that yes, the, the public was given this land." And the, the ultimate issue is, uh, yes, so we, we think we'll do an encroachment or we think we'll do something else. But those things haven't been addressed, in, in my opinion, in my client's opinion, adequately to allow this plan to go forward. If those things could be addressed, if they could be fixed, then certainly my client's not gonna stand in the way of progress. He want, he's been a, a member of this community as long as everybody else has been here. His father started owning these properties first. They've gone to him. Now they're going to his sons. So it's, it's not something that he wants to see go away. He doesn't wanna see the, the downward plight of this community. He wants it built up. But as a concerned citizen, he wants it done correctly. And that's the only thing we're asking this board to do, this council, is to follow the rules that have already been promulgated by all of you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lippman.
Mr. Stewart.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, you have said on four occasions that land is not owned by the city. Would you please explain what you mean?
Sure. Um, and it was addressed, uh, by Mr. Mark, uh, Sekman, too. There's land that was deeded. If you give me one second, pull that up.
When I check the property records from Orlando or the Orange County Property Appraiser, that's all, all the property is determined to be owned by the City of Orlando or the City of Orlando and the CRA. Is there other property that's on here that's not owned by one of those two entities?
Part of the property was deeded to the public in general. The public is not the City of Orlando. And that was addressed in, in the PowerPoint presentation by Mr. Sleckman, where he specifically said, "To address those particular issues, uh, the city could, um, either do an encroachment or do a partial abandonment." And the only reason those terms are brought up was related to the public, uh, uh, deeding of the property. The city had deeded it. At some point, it was deeded to the public. And because...
It's deeded to the public and it's in with the City of Orlando. How, how are you determining? I don't know the legal entity of this issue, but I'm trying to figure out that if it's deeded to the public and therefore, who is the owner of that if it's deeded to the public? Is the City of Orlando the owner of that?
No. No, it's not. The City of Orlando...
Who is the owner? The United States?
The, the public. And, and Mr. Baker can address that, which I believe he was planning on doing in his second portion of...
I'll let him do that then. That's, thank you for your answer. Tell me a question again. I don't have, I've read through your stuff. Tell me why you believe you have standing in this.
Well, going back to, um, what we presented originally...
Do you have adjoining property?
I'm sorry?
Do you have adjoining property?
We have adjoining property and the, uh...
Did you list the adjoining property in your affidavit?
I believe it was listed. Yes, sir.
I'm looking for it and I can't find it. Would you please let me, tell me what that address is?
Eight hundred McFall Avenue. And I'll, let, let me just check with my client.
Eight hundred McFall Avenue?
Yes. And that's in our petition, uh, paragraph number two.
All I find is a Pine Harbor Point address. I'm looking for other addresses there. You say you, your petitioner owns property eight hundred McFall Avenue?
Yes. And that's listed in number, uh, paragraph two of our, uh, initial petition and opposition. But he's the owner of that.
Are you familiar with the, are you... Have you ever heard your client actually tell somebody else that they are going to procedurally try to stop your project and sue to make such a case that it would not go forward?
Uh, if you could be more...
Can you answer the que... Yes. I'm, I'm not gonna be more specific. I'm asking if you had your client ever talk to you about procedurally moving something forward or suing somebody in the case so that this would be killed because of the lawsuit in the practice, process?
Respectfully, and I understand the question, you're asking something that...
It's a yes or no question.
No, it involves attorney-client privilege and information, and I can't divulge my conversations with my client.
That's perfect. Thank you. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. In rebuttal, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Sekman two of the questions he did not address. Please. Uh, number one, may land included within a platted public right-of-way be used to calculate the total number of residential units allowed on a development site? Question number two, if your answer to the foregoing question is yes, please provide examples of other rezoning projects where the applicant has been able to use the area of land within platted public rights-of-way for the purposes of calculating maximum units allowed. And I'm asked that he answer those questions. I'd also, Mayor, like to be able to use your overhead projector, if I may, which means I may need a little assistance to turn it on. So I'll give it a shot. Thank you, Ed.
that my client has an option for a contract to purchase.
Pardon me, pardon me. Can, yeah, can I put that back up there a second? This is the property of eight fourteen South Paramore. And you're...
Yes.
Just a quick question. To take over from your time, who is Luke and Hannah Wickman?
They're the, the current owners.
They're the owner of the property. So you are, you believe that you have standing because you have a contract with the piece of property that you've not, have not yet closed on?
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, this is the verified legal description form, uh, submitted by the applicant. I'm trying to zoom out, but I'm gonna have to just show this to you. But on the, this is for Area One, which is owned by the CRA. If I could ask you to look at the highlighted language, they go through in a, it's a meat-and-bounce description, including with the statement, "This is the above is not platted and known as Wells Landing," according to the plat- there are, Flat Book seventy-three, pages one twenty-one and one twenty-two. Five point zero seven acres more or less. And when we look at the final page of the script, it states that, um, it's five point zero seven acres more or less, including all parcels plus other non-parcel areas. This is what Wells Landing, the plat of Wells Landing looks like as we, in the public records today. The highlighted, uh, street names are the public rights-of-way. Those are within the yellow boundary, which is the project you're dealing with today. Part of the project you're dealing with. This is a, uh, from your Land Development Code, section sixty-six point two hundred. It talks about the permitted density, how we measure it in the city. It's measured after plating, but before any additional right-of-way dedication on an already-platted lot. That means you can't use the street right-of-way to calculate density. This is the site plan, showing you, highlighted in yellow, where the streets are, the public rights-of-way. This is the affidavit I've submitted to you earlier that states that the area within the rights-of-way is point nine seven acres. And finally, to answer Commissioner Stewart's question, um, this is an Attorney General opinion, uh, responding to a question by a county attorney, essentially saying, "If we abandon right-of-way, can we convey the land to a homeowners' association that wants to control it?" Her answer, or at the time, his answer, um, says, "You can abandon the right-of-way, but you can't violate individual property rights. The county is not authorized and cannot in any manner legally convey or transfer ownership and control of the vacated roads. Upon lawful vacation thereof..."
Wait, wait, wait. Finish reading that.
"...upon lawful..."
"Two-way homeowners' association as such."
"...or street to a homeowners' association as such, but upon lawful vacation thereof, the abutting fee owners hold the title and fees simple to the vacated roadways or streets to the center thereof, unburdened and unencumbered by the public's prior easement to use such roadways or streets for travel." So, if I may, Mayor, answer his question. He, Commissioner Stewart was concerned about who owns it. It's the, it's, the prior owners own it. The successors entitled to that subdivision. Now, that won't be a, Mr. Sekman said that the city's gonna go through an abandonment process. And that's a public hearing process, um, that would be required before any land is, reverts back to the prior owners. That's why we're saying the city doesn't own the land today. To the extent that the street on the north, America Street, is, uh, vacated, half of that right-of-way will go to the north, which is not in our project. Half of it'll come to the south, which is in our project. Thank you.
I just have one question, Mr. Baker. Um, are your clients or any of their associated entities gonna make application for tax credits that would be in competition with this project?
Well, they would, but this, there's only one applicant. The city has already chosen who the applicant will be. And we could certainly address that in more detail, Mr. Mayor, when we get to the portion of the, uh, agenda today on that, on the tax credits.
Let me make sure I understand your question. You would like to make application if you can defeat this project?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would rather have my client respond to that, or we can respond to that during the portion of the...
during the portion of the hearing or the agenda on the tax credits themselves.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, we will hear from then Invictus, the applicant?
Paul Rhodes, Invictus Development, two eleven Southwestland Avenue, Unit Two, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six oh six. I'm expecting Christmas cards from all of you because you all have my address and I'm sure you've memorized it by now. In no particular order, I'd like to address a few of the things that were brought up. I think the first thing that's important, and, and I'm sure that you're all familiar with it, but I think it's important that we all just have it in our minds right now while we're talking about this, and that is the definition of an adversely affected person as set out in the quasi-judicial ordinance. An adversely affected person is a person who will suffer a negative effect to a protected interest as a result of the quasi-judicial action sought by the applicant. And to establish my standing in case Mr. Baker cast any doubt on it, we're the applicant. So, of course, we have standing in this proceeding. The alleged adversely affected interest may be shared in common with other members of the community at large, but shall exceed in degree the general interests and community good shared by all persons. An association shall not be deemed to be an adversely affected person. I submit that neither of these parties have an interest that's adversely affected that exceeds in degree the interest of those in the community that have been expressed here and the city's interest in seeing this project go forward. I also wanted to take a minute just to remind you about the exigent circumstances that gave rise to this, the situation that we're in now. In eighteen days, well, less than eighteen days, because at eleven o'clock in the morning on December thirtieth, the door closes to submitting our application. As you know, this is something we have to go through in order to submit our application. I think I can answer without waiting for Mr. Baker's client. Indeed, they do intend to submit an application. And no, not only one application can go in, not from Orange County. Any municipality and the county itself could have provided the same support that the City of Orlando gave to its project, Paramore. The fact that they don't have that, i-if it turns out that they don't have that, I don't know that they don't. I don't know that Winter Park or one of the other communities or the county itself hasn't given the same level of support to a project that they would like to see go forward. This is not a only one project gets to go in. Yes, this does give you a substantial advantage, there is no question about it. And this very ability to have this substantial advantage may not exist next year. So it's now or it may not happen again. And one of the reasons that is the case is that Mr. Baker is suing right now in Tallahassee to stop Florida Housing from implementing the rule and the specifications set forth in this request for applications that allows local governments this opportunity to select a project that they would like to see done in their community. He is also, his client, I'm sorry, maintain, well, through these very same lawyers, maintaining an action in Hillsborough County against the City of Tampa on the same grounds that we have seen in the Orange County actions he's filed here to try to take another tactic to prevent our application. Those are the interests that are negatively impacted. They're not negatively impacted by the PD. They are not negatively impacted by the zoning in any manner, and certainly in no manner that exceeds in degree the community, and you heard from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mark?
Hopefully, I got all the questions written down, but if I don't, please let me know. What justifies the PD? Well, anybody can apply for a PD. If you have ten thousand square feet, that's what you need. You can't beat smaller than that. But that PD has to be consistent with their growth management plan. We also have to review it. It's discretionary to some degree with both the board and to the city council. So, that should answer that question. A lot came up about the paper streets. The existing streets of, I think, McFall and America, they support the old Wells Landing project. That is pretty much defunct. Nobody wants to do that. So, the idea of vacating those really makes a lot of sense to the city staff. How do you get rid of those? Well, you could either go through a vacation process, or since they are paper, potentially, if the folks in legal are okay with this, they could be replatted over. That hasn't been worked out. We'll have to figure that out. Also, if you don't vacate them, if you just use the land and not the, the streets, and by the way, these streets are not fee simple, they're dedicated to the public through a, a dedication. So, there's a little bit of a difference between a fee simple piece of land and dedication. So, it is up to the city to vacate those. Also, the land, if you take out those two streets, is about forty units to the acre, which is the maximum bonus. So, it's still within the maximum bonus as prescribed by code. Have we ever used right-of-way in the past to calculate density calculation? Yes, we did. The Plaza Solare project, Court Street was included in our density calculation for the, it is a public street, I understand, but there's a giant building over top, so we consider that in the density calculation. And I think that answers most of the questions.
Sure.
I wanted to address a couple of others, again, Paul Lewis, Chief Planning Manager. I wanted to provide a little bit of additional information in response. I wanted to show for the benefit of the city council, the property that, some, some pictures of the property at eight fourteen South Paramore. This particular property is, is, as we've discussed, is currently owned by Luke Wickham and Hannah Wickham. The alleged contract purchaser is SW Florida LLC. It's a duplex. It is, has a living space, and this is, this is information from the Orange County Property Appraiser, of one thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet. Because it's a duplex, that, that, you divide that up, that gets you to five hundred and seventy-six feet per unit. This is the property at eight hundred McFall Street, owned by Mr. Coward, and it is a duplex as well. It is nine hundred and thirty-one square feet in size. You divide that up into two, and that's four hundred and sixty-five square feet per unit. A vacant piece of property owned by Mr. Coward, I believe, or one of his entities. It's a vacant piece of property, so there's not many data to associate with that. But those are the properties that were listed in the petition and opposition for the two, for the two appellants. I think it's important for you to, to look at that because when you're looking at the petition and opposition, they talk a lot about how, how the Paramore Oaks project is not compatible with those properties, and, and that they don't meet the tradition, and that the new project doesn't meet traditional design standards or new urbanism standards. And I refute that with every ounce of my being. We can't judge the compatibility of this new project against some, these particular properties. So, I firmly believe that the sustainability, the sustainable aspects of this project, that the, the urban design aspects of this project are superior.
Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got two questions. One is, the opposing party here is claiming that this particular project is underparked. Where that, where that come from and how is it, or is it not underparked?
I'm going to let Mr. Suckman answer that particular question.
The, the city code sets out a calculation for how many spaces you need for an multifamily project, and off the top of my head, it's like three hundred and eighty-something, and there are about ninety spaces less than that. And that's why in my presentation, how do we mitigate that? How do we, is this in an area that would handle ninety less parking spaces than required by code? In my opinion, yes, it is, because we have mass transit, limo, we have the bus routes, we have, it's a walkable and, and bicycle community. So, those things are leading toward a need for less parking spaces than a normal project. So, through the PD process, we're recommending support of those ninety less spaces, like a hundred and eighty-eight versus three seventy-something.
Does any standards we use in order to calculate that?
Well, it, it, it's twenty-four percent less. We have a code that, if they went through a different process, not the PD process, but a variance process, we have a code that says we could accept up to forty percent less if, you know, if some things are looked at and, and some things are taken into consideration, like I just said. So, it's not even at that maximum forty percent. Now, forty percent's a lot, to be frank, but we feel at twenty-four percent for the project for the area with the walkability standards, we feel that it could work without having a parking problem.
Okay. And my next question is, can somebody clarify this for me once and for all? The city owns or don't own the property?
I, I talked to Richard Allen, our surveyor. That property in the Wells Landing plat was dedicated to the public. Now, it's not fee simple, that's a dedication. So, if the property owners on both sides or once, or in one side in one case, would have petitioned the city to, to vacate that property, or either through the plat process, it could be extinguished and eliminated, and that property could be returned fee simple to the property owners. The other option is on America Street because we do have another property owner to the north, and traditionally, when you vacate property, half goes to one side, half goes to the other. Another option is an encroachment agreement. If you look at their site plan, they're not having building over that portion that they don't, only on one side. They have a parking area, which kind of lines up a little bit like a street. So, potentially, we could do an encroachment agreement on that side.
So legally and, and, and every other way, we have the right to dispose of that property?
I would say yes, sir.
I think so, Commissioner. I think you have the right to convey the property if you ultimately decide to convey the property later. For purposes of zoning, I think you have adequate site control based on what Mark and the others have said, so I think you can rezon this property if you choose to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, real estate may have to help us if they're still here. I believe that that property, before the, the property was subdivided into the Wells Landing Site, was in the city ownership.
Well, the Wells Landing plat is dedicated to the public, so whoever owned the, whoever, whoever owned it-
All right, let's let Laurie come speak to that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Laurie Box, Real Estate Manager for the City of Orlando. The property before it became as Paramore Village, when we acquired it, the city owned all of the property when we sold it to a developer-
Excuse me, Mayor. Does she need to be sworn in? No.
The city is, let me get to the, cut to the chase, the city, I assure you, is the encumbered fee simple owner of this property. I'll be going through that in my presentation in just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie.
Mr. Stewart?
Mark, can you let me know, how far is this from the Sun Rail Station?
Approximately a mile, but it's a, it's a half mile to the limo line. From the limo line, you can get to the Sun Rail Station.
Okay. All right.
I, I walked it on Saturday. It took me about thirteen minutes.
Okay, well, the question I was asking was specific about the, we had incentives designed for those areas that were close, and those incentives were specifically around transportation and parking. And so, I was wanting to make sure if it fell into some of that category as well. And then there was another question I had, but I'm certainly have not forgotten.
If Paul walked it in thirteen minutes, I'd like to change my answer to a lot less than a mile.
No, it's, it's between a half mile and a mile.
We've seen him walk before.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions, Mark or Paul, or Paul, did you have anything?
I do, I did want to add one thing, and very, a couple hours ago, I mentioned that, that we, that I wanted to incorporate the entire, the Paramore Conference of Neighborhood Plan in its entirety into the, into the record. And aspect of that particular plan is Appendix E, which is a market study. One of the appellants spoke about there haven't been any changed conditions over the last decade or so that would cause that this, you know, the, the former Wells Landing Site not to be viable and for this project to, to, to be. So, I just want to point out that the market study and our, all of our knowledge, that there has been some pretty significant economic changes over the last ten years, including, with the Great Recession, with the housing bubble, the inability of, of many people to be able to finance single-family and fee simple townhomes and single-family units, and that's one of the reasons why Wells Landing was not able to proceed. And we determined in the Paramore Plan that, that apartments were viable through the market study. And so, I just wanted to point that out. The other thing that we determined in the Paramore Plan is that the only way to increase neighborhood stability and to increase the opportunities for businesses is to get people into the neighborhood. And we see this as an integral catalyst project to that objective.
Thank you. Other questions? Dean, can you put up your slide on the five options that we have? Is that easy to pull back up?
Yeah.
In the meantime, I will entertain any additional questions or comments, counsel while Dean is putting that action up.
Yeah. One question.
Commissioner Stewart?
I now remember what my question was. I guess this is Dean, Paul, and to Mark. During any of this process, did we receive an affidavit from Mr. Baker as to the fact that he has the right to represent a potential seller? Did you bring, did he bring a copy of a contract there? Did, is there anything that we received as evidence that the-
I've not seen anything. I don't know about Mr. Suckman.
Okay. Mark, can you?
Mr. I don't remember anything. We did get a petition from Mr. Baker. I'm not sure if he in there claimed it, I think he probably claimed that he represented his client.
Commissioner, to answer your question, to my knowledge, we haven't at the city received any evidence that there's a contract for-
As a sales contract or anything. So, let me make sure, I don't want to defend Mr. Baker because I'm, you know, I'm friends with some of the members of his law firm. A person comes to us and says that there is an actual sale on the property, but hasn't disclosed any contractual sale, and it says as an affidavit that he represents the new seller and that's, transaction hasn't gone through. And we believe that person has standing in this? I mean, I guess that's my judgment. I now have to decide whether we think that person actually has standing or not.
That, that is your decision right now, and you have to base it on the evidence or lack thereof that you've heard.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this point, if there's no further discussions, we have five options between us. One is to approve the zoning, zoning application. One is to approve it with-
There it comes again. There you go.
Conditions recommended by staff and the MPB. If we want to put any additional conditions on it, deny the zoning application, or send the whole thing back to a, for a quasi-judicial, to a hearing officer. From my perspective, we have other things that we're going to do later, assuming this is determined with favorable outcome for the applicant. The issue before us is whether the PD, the zoning application, is supported, so with irrespective of what the motivations by the petitioners may be, I think staff has done a very apt job of supporting the MPB's decision and recommendations relating to the PD itself. So, I don't think we have to get beyond that. Kyle, do we, if we're going to approve the zoning application with the conditions recommended by staff and the MPB, do we need to adopt the findings of fact that were recommended by the staff?
Yes, sir. That's our recommendation. Staff's recommendation is that you adopt the findings of fact proposed to the planning board, and that were found by the planning board at their meeting.
So, that's contained within option number two?
Yes, sir. That's right. You're adopting all-
You're adopting all those findings that are incorporated into the staff report if you do number two.
Okay, if we don't weigh in one way or the other on the standing, does that affect this one way or the other?
No, I don't think you need to make a formal ruling on it. I think you should take all the testimony that you've heard, weigh it, and come to a conclusion. I don't think you need to come up with any formal decision on standing.
Okay, I would propose that we not deal with the issue of standing and just give them the benefit of the doubt, that this point on that particular issue, and that we approve the zoning application with the conditions recommended by the staff or MPB. Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we still got some stuff to do, but let me actually sign a couple things. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to the ordinance itself, which is on second reading, number one, ordinance twenty sixteen dash ninety-seven.
Ordinance twenty sixteen ninety-seven relating to Paramore Oaks Plan Development. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located between Carter Street on the north and Willis Street on the south, and between Erskine Avenue on the east and Short Avenue on the west comprised of six-point-three-four acres of land, more or less, as the Plan Development District, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the Plan Development District, providing for severability, permit disclaimer, correction of scrivenos errors, and an effective date.
Move to the dot, second. Motion by Commissioner Ains, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Okay, this is the implementing ordinance to the work that we just did. Kyle, am I able to simply adopt all of this stuff that just happened in the last?
That was what I was just ringing in to suggest, is that, to the extent that the parties that have the right to be heard are okay with it, you can simply ask them to take all the comments that they gave during the quasi judicial and submit them into the record, and the city clerk can note that in the minutes, and that would save everybody a lot of time.
Okay, does anybody feel compelled to speak beyond that?
Mister Mayor, Greg Lee here, on behalf of Land Use Council for Invictus. We did have one adjustment that we'd like to request in the text of the ordinance, and that adjustment is on the first sentence, paragraph G, page three, where the ordinance suggests that an SPMP, or Specific Partial Master Plan, is required for each phase of development prior to applying for building permits. We'd like that to be corrected to say the second phase of development, so that the plan that has been submitted with the application could serve as the development plan for the first phase.
So you change each to the second?
Yes, Mayor, strike each and read that as second.
Okay, anybody else need to testify? Okay, it's line one twenty-three on page three. We can do this one of two ways. We can either do an amendment, or we can, I guess that would be the cleanest way, is to do an amendment, so.
I'll move the amendment.
Commissioner Stewart moves the amendment. I need a second. Second. Second, and that amendment would be to replace on line one twenty-three, page three, the word each with the second. So it would read for the second phase versus for each phase. Okay, motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Good.
Why was it aye?
Okay, Mr. Baker.
Mister Mayor, so the PD ordinance is still on the table?
Yep.
I want to lodge an objection to the recent amendment you just made, because that would take it out of the Specific Partial Master Plan process, which was contemplated all along for each phase. So the project doesn't meet the requirements and the code to proceed immediately to site development.
Okay, objection noted. Further discussion, all in favor of the motion, and this is on the main motion to adopt the ordinance. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, main ordinance. Aye. All right, let's do that again. We're voting on the main ordinance as amended. All in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, so it passes unanimously as well. All right, that now brings us, and let's take note that those last two votes, Commissioner Hill abstained from and was not a voting member of the council. Okay, we are now on the, we're going to do two hearings, one by the City Council and one by the CRA. So what I would propose is to maintain the City Council meeting, but also convene the CRA as well, for the purpose of having a joint hearing between the city and the county, so that we can, the city and the CRA, so that we can adopt the presentation for both the city and the CRA once versus having that hearing twice. So it'll be a joint hearing, and then we will vote as the city, and we will also vote as the CRA. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor Lori Botts, Real Estate Manager for the city. This is the last two items before you today. The Paramore Oaks, this is a hearing for the disposition of the city's land. There are two contracts, one for Phase One and one for Phase Two, and a developer's agreement. I'll be speaking about the contract, and Thomas Chapman will talk about the developer's agreement. As it's a hearing, I need to read this to you. The hearing is for the disposition of property owned by the city and CRA within downtown CRA as required by section one sixty-three, point three eight zero, subsection two, Florida statutes, chapter thirteen, section seven of the city charter. Notice was published in the Orlando Sentinel on Friday, December second of twenty sixteen. Here's the map of the property, you're familiar with that. As I stated before, the property is owned by the city and the CRA. We acquired it back, as you can see, the CRA actually owns the piece, to the north of Conley, and the city owns the lots that are to the south. Here is the history, and since we have already gone through the history, I will let you read that on your own, but I do want to bring one thing out to you. In twenty fifteen, when the city and the CRA issued a solicitation for the development proposals, there's been some question about the city's financial donation back on the property. The solicitation, there's been some talk about whether this was in the original solicitation. The solicitation did contemplate the possibility of the selected developer receiving funding from the city or the CRA to subsidize the project. In the pre-bid meeting on November fifteenth, that was twenty fifteen, a year ago, it was announced and sent by email to all interested parties that the CRA had up to three million dollars available for Paramore Housing, and that proposers could factor some or all of those funds into their proposals. In fact, all proposers received some, included some proposed subsidy in their proposals. Stacy Banich, who Madison Hollow South and Madison Plaza have characterized as their representative in the recent court cases against the city, attended and signed into the pre-bid meeting and received this information, both at the meeting and by email following the meeting. In addition, Mr. Banich inquired as to whether the city would be able to sign forms to allow a twenty fifteen application for tax credits. Staff advised all interested parties by email that the process did not allow enough time for a twenty fifteen application, but that it was anticipated that the selected developer would pursue twenty sixteen tax credits for this project. The terms of the twenty sixteen RFA were not drafted by the state until after the selection of Invictus. The twenty sixteen dash one-one-three RFA does not require the city to establish a process in providing a preference. On May ninth of twenty sixteen, council and the CRA approved the ranking of the proposals and authorized negotiation of a contract for sale and purchase and development agreement with top-ranked Invictus Development Incorporated. The contract for sale and purchase has the total land broken down into phases one and two. Phase one is, the offer was made by Invictus to pay the city three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and six cents. Phase two, they proposed to offer the city a hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and eighteen cents. I had the property appraised. It was a difficult appraisal for the appraiser to do, but the appraised value of the entire site is two million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The contract allows, or the contract has a prohibition of the sale, lease, or transfer of the site until construction, of all improvements is included, is complete. The reason for that is that we don't want a developer to come in and then sell it off. We want them to complete the project in full. Invictus has indicated to us not only will they do that, but they will continue to manage the project after it's built and we have residents there. There is an affordable housing and a permanent supportive housing deed restrictions in the contract that will protect the city. Thomas is going to go over the development agreement.
Thank you, Lori, and Mayor and council, a considerable amount, this is redundant, and so I'll breeze through it. You're of course aware now that there are two hundred and eleven residential rental units in the project, and there will be mixed income, including market rate. You know that there's Phase One, one hundred and twenty units, and Phase Two, ninety-one units, and high-quality concrete block construction, and you've heard that the design will incorporate SEPTED. You've seen the site plan, most of Phase One, all of Phase One is actually along the south Paramore area. Phase Two is the area to your left, to the west of the parking. You've seen renderings of what the type, the level of the caliber of design we can expect. The total estimated Phase One development cost of the project exceeds twenty-three million dollars. Some six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars within that would be CRA investment for the affordable housing component of Phase One, and the developer has agreed to comply fully with the city's WBE and MBE goals, as well as the living wage policy. Long-term benefits achieved by the project, project is, as you've heard from others, is consistent with the DT outlook, which is the CRA's official redevelopment area plan. The goals and the use is specified in that outlook, obviously improves the variety of housing options in the area, by development of high-quality market rate, affordable, as well as permanent affordable housing, and that helps achieve elimination of slum and blight, which is fundamental, by the way, to CRAs and why we were created. And finally, on this slide, the site is identified, as Paul said earlier, by both the DT outlook as well as the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan, as a catalytic site. In conclusion, staff feels strongly that the value at which the property is being conveyed is in the public interest, due to the restrictions placed on the property and the long-term benefits achieved by the property. And finally, Mayor and Commissioners, I will submit to you that your leadership has resulted spectacularly, actually, in hundreds of millions of dollars being invested into the Paramore area, particularly into sporting and entertainment venues, and that has started more commercial interests in the area. But I'd also submit that the successful revitalization of a neighborhood like Paramore and responsible redevelopment of that area can only be achieved with the provision of adequate amounts of quality mixed-income housing on all levels, not just affordable, not just workforce, but market as well, all levels of housing has to be achieved in adequate numbers. The area, as we know historically now for many, many years, is severely underserved with quality housing at all levels. This project, as has been talked about by others before me, really addresses many of those ills. Mayor, that's all we have.
Okay, we're going to do, take the testimony at a joint hearing. Commissioner Stewart?
Mayor, I noticed that he mentioned about the incentive for Phase One only. Is that what we're voting on here, is only Phase One? Or, because I think, doesn't the disposition of the property call for Phase One and Phase Two? Is there an incentive for Phase Two? There is no incentive for Phase Two.
It's not been discussed.
Okay.
Okay, before tech motion, I have three cards for people that want to testify at the public hearing. Kyle, could you explain, we're going to give Madison Hollow twenty minutes to present at this? Want to explain that?
Yes, sir. City Attorney's Office last week agreed to a settlement to avoid a trial that was going to occur on a motion for a temporary injunction, and as part of that settlement, we agreed to recommend to you all that you hear from the entities involved with Madison Hollow, Madison South, or the clients of Mr. Baker, for a total of twenty minutes, ten minutes each for one of their clients for a total of twenty. Now, other than that, you would also take public testimony from everybody else, it would be your normal five minutes that you have in your city code.
And I have three speakers' cards related to that. Okay, set the timer for twenty minutes. Our, hold on, Commissioner Hill and then Commissioner Ains.
I just have one question, reference the commitment to the MWBE participation. Does that include local MWBE participation, or are we looking at bringing outside people from Tampa to do the work on this build-out?
Commissioner, it's consistent with our policy, and our policy allows, or establishes a, I'll call it an unofficial preference, we take a look at local first, but it's not to say that we exclude other minorities or other female-owned companies from coming in under that policy.
Yeah, I'm only talking about local participation that's in Orlando, central Florida versus someone coming from Tampa, even though they may be minority or women-owned. You know, especially if you have a talent here.
Sure.
And so why would we exclude that? That's my real concern.
Ms. Rhodes has a card in for appearance during the public testimony part of that, so you guys can probably address that at that time. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, twenty minutes from Madison Hollow.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Tim Schulte. I'm a partner at Zimmerman, Kaiser, and Sutcliffe. Scott Baker is my law partner. I'm here today, my address is three fifteen East Robinson Street, Orlando, Florida. We're here today not to cast dispersions on this project, the Paramore Oaks Project. We are an affordable housing developer. We have developed twenty-one hundred units in the state of Florida, and right now, we are proposing two projects in the city of Orlando, one of those in Commissioner Hill's district, and one of those in Commissioner Gray's district. So please understand, and we know that the mayor is behind the Paramore Oaks Project, he has said that in his State of the City address, and we support the mayor. The mayor has done a phenomenal job for this city, and we're not going to dispute that in any way. But as Commissioner Sheehan said, sometimes the process makes the project better. And what's on the table right now is whether or not the Paramore Oaks Project is prepared to get, be awarded a grant from the city and millions of dollars of tax credits by Florida Housing by December thirty of this month. And the answer to that is that they are not. And there's a very, there's two simple reasons. One, you've heard a lot from Mr. Baker, and I'm going to let him address some of those issues again. But the biggest concern I have is with the RFP process. Paramore Oaks is located in a CRA. Pursuant to the statute that Ms. Botts read to you a few moments ago, any sale of land from the CRA must be subject to an RFP process. The city conducted an RFP process in two thousand and fifteen, and in that process selected Invictus. The problem is, that RFP did not say that the city was going to award six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to the developer, and it also didn't say that the city was going to grant a preferential treatment. In the vernacular of Florida Housing, it's called a local government preference. Ms. Rhodes called it a super advantage, or a substantial advantage, and that's exactly what it is. If the city selects, if the city grants six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, that grant, in and of itself, will create a priority for the Paramore Oaks Project, or whoever- a priority for the Paramore Oaks project, or whoever the city gives it to for their project, that will almost certainly result in that being the project that's developed in, from the city of Orlando, if it can qualify otherwise. And the problem with the Paramore Oaks project, the problem with what you're being asked to do right now in giving a contract for the sale of that land, is that the RFP has been materially altered. The RFP from 2015, that was done in 2015, has changed. As Ms. Bott said, there was no local government preference at the time of your initial RFP. We have told city staff that we need, that there needs to be a process. There has to be an RFP to deal with this material alteration. And the alternative is, is that under, the Florida Supreme Court has said, if there's a material alteration of the RFP process, then the contract that you're approving today will be void. If the contract is void, then Invictus and Paramore Oaks cannot be awarded tax housing credits. And as a result, nobody, nobody in the city of Orlando is going to get that local government preference tax housing credits. The Paramore project is also not ready under the rules of Florida Housing because there are various zoning and site control forms that have to be signed by the mayor. The city can't sign those by December 30. And I've asked Mr. Baker just to address those real quickly.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, you've heard me talk about ownership of the property. I have to disagree with your staff. You have an outstanding staff, and I could see how much work they put in to this project as they have in a lot of other projects that I bring in front of the city. I'd simply have to disagree that the city can convey the right-of-way as we stand here today. Mr. Sackman mentioned the abandonment process or the encroachment agreement, neither of which can really hap, the abandonment process cannot happen prior to December 30th. So we don't see how city staff or leadership can sign a form attesting to the zoning and density being, or ownership being in place. The ownership is critical to calculation of the density. It's also critical to site control. We don't believe the project has site control. If you take those rights-of-way out of the site plan, you can't, you simply can't develop the project, even in phase one, the way it's been presented today. So I've already given you a lot of evidence about this. I'm not going to belabor the point, and I'll let Mr. Schulte continue with his presentation. Thank you.
Nobody likes to hear just the problems without a solution. The solution in this case, there's two solutions that are possible. One, the city has to. It has to conduct a new RFP process on the Paramore Oaks project if it's going to award a $648,000 grant and millions of dollars of tax credits. The other alternative is, is that the city just does not give this local government preference this grant to Paramore Oaks and let all of the affordable housing developers that are in this cycle compete on an equal footing for affordable housing credits here in the city of Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you abandoning your last 13 minutes and 50 seconds?
I was very efficient, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we do have three other appearance request cards. Phil Cowherd. Waves your time in opposition, right? Okay, Mr. Kringman. I'm sorry, this time I can't read your last name.
King.
Kingman.
No.
Wave in opposition to it, right? Okay, Paula Rhodes.
Do I need to state my address again? Thank you. I respectfully disagree with the opposition. I'd like to reiterate the concerns that we stated previously regarding the appellant. The reason that Mr. Schulte and Mr. Baker think that we're not ready is because they've done everything in their power to try to stand in our way as far as the zoning goes. That, first of all, I want to clarify for purposes of the form, the zoning form that you're being asked to sign for that application covers only the use of the property and the number of units. You don't have to get into every little aspect, nor does Florida Housing expect that you will at this stage in the process. So the readiness issue is not an issue when it comes to that. As far as the RFP and the substantial change, I think Lori Botts addressed that quite nicely in explaining that the city had made it known to all of the parties that expressed interest in the RFP when initially issued, that funds would be made available, that the city had up to $3 million. That question was specifically asked. One of the principals of Mr. Schulte and Mr. Baker's clients, Stacy Benet, was at that meeting, signed in on the roster. So we know that they were aware that funding was available. And to reiterate what Ms. Botts said also, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, local government area of opportunity funding points that now exist did not exist at the time of the RFP. I can't imagine how an after-the-fact event can make that process flawed. I also wanted to go on the record as consenting to the utilization of MWBE firms in Central Florida. We will be doing that. We will certainly go through the list of all of the registered and certified WBE firms in the Orlando area that the, I know the city does maintain that. And I also wanted to let you know, we've already started on that. Our community organizer is a woman, Kimberly Jackson, who is on the register for both the city of Orlando and the city of Tampa, and she has been working with us to help us in the Paramore community, interface with the residents, and get some feedback on what they would like to see as far as the project's concerned. So we are committed to that.
And I think Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Ainge, and all the rest of the council would like to know that Gennaro Colter will become your best friend. He heads up our blueprint effort, which helps to connect Paramore residents with the opportunities for jobs on construction-related projects within the Paramore and surrounding areas.
That will be done. My new best friend.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Can I provide?
Sure.
Just one other comment on the challenge to the amount of funding available to the project through the local area opportunity initiative by the state of Florida. This was a state of Florida agenda item that they put in their RFA for this money. This was not something that was perpetrated by the city, et cetera. It's in the process for Florida Housing, the appeal, the opponent has challenged that process at the state level with Florida Housing. So they're fully aware of what's going on with this whole process and trying to use every means they can to stop it from happening.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I just briefly want to, just make a brief comment, thank you, about this particular project. When we, when they're talking about tax credit dollars and affordable housing and the concentration of low income, but this is a mixed-income project, which is, which is, as Paul was stated earlier, that the people of Paramore had came together for the last, that year and a half and stated that they want it implemented in the Paramore area. While I'm speaking, I would like for Ed to briefly put some slides up about the now in Paramore. We have Lexington Court, which is there, there in the Paramore area, right there near Millia, near the new creative village across from Orlando Votech that now has been, has, is a model such as this that has low-income workforce and market-rate housing. And it has a waiting list, not the first project, as such as people are being led to believe. We have another project that's up and coming directly with the Usler Group and Bank of America that has been approved and that has tax credit dollars to do this there in the creative village area. Second, affordable.
That's not a rendering of either of the projects that you're talking about.
I know it. Oh, no, exactly. I know it isn't.
Waiting list.
Well, you know, it's funny, there is a waiting list for homes in Paramore such as this, because there isn't adequate housing in Paramore. And the reason I wanted to bring this is because these are the conditions currently in Paramore. Keep going. Boarded-up houses, wood houses, which people are knocking on the doors to try to get in, that is owned, some of them, by the plaintiff. Paramore. And there were more. I apologize that I didn't send them all. This is the living conditions of the people in Paramore currently, currently, where we have mole-infested houses, where rats and roaches crawl around among little babies. I'm glad today we made the right choice and the right decision. No, we don't need low-income, dilapidated, concentrated housing in Paramore. Now it's time for newly renovated and revitalized housing in Paramore. We as a city, we're growing and thriving, building great, great effaces. So yes, now it's time for Paramore. Those days of decayed living and squalor, and for people to come to the community and say, "No poor is allowed" because they bring down the property value. How about building people and bringing up and empowering people and bringing up their value? I beg to differ that if we continue to have the poor in Paramore breeds crime. What breeds crime is not giving people access to education. Well, we know now with the University of Central Florida being there, Valencia Community College being there, Orlando Votech, where there's technical training there, and now a preschool through eighth-grade community school there, where healthcare will be there, night classes for parents, that's right there in Paramore, childcare, which is one of the biggest things that the working-class poor can't afford, will be there free in Paramore. It's a new day that's coming to Paramore. So let's give them adequate housing so that they can thrive, because the city has stated that we'll take the homeless off the streets, and the way that we build the homeless again is housing first. So I really applaud the council today for saying that they will build the people of Paramore as we're building and revitalizing Paramore by saying housing first now for the people of Paramore. So I move.
Okay, we're convened as the city and the CRA, but I will accept the motion on the city approval of the disposition and development of property and purchasing, sale agreements and development agreements related to Paramore Oaks project. So on behalf of the city. Motion by.
Mayor, if I might.
Second.
Mayor, if I might speak, I just, I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it's directed at Kyle or the applicant or the appellant, but clearly we need affordable housing. Nobody's doubting that. The dilemma I'm faced with now, based on the last testimonies, we have two credible sources, as I'm hearing it, and if I'm wrong, somebody educate me. The appellant is saying, we, it's our opinion, professional opinion, they will not be able to qualify for the credits by the end of the year. And we have an applicant that says, yes, we will. How do we know? And I guess my thought is, and I'm open for some ideas and suggestions.
Well, we know if we don't vote on this, they will not absolutely be able to qualify.
Correct, I agree. So if we vote on this and support the applicant, then we know Madison is gone. So I look at our friends at Invictus and say, look, if we put our support in you and you're wrong, and you don't make it, and we lose all credits, what recourse do we have? Are you?
Commissioner, there's, there will be other applicants. I don't assume that the appellants are going to withdraw their applications at this point.
Okay.
And there are other applications within the city of Orlando as well.
But clearly, without this support, I doubt they'll have a chance to win.
Well, but if, if they don't qualify with this support, then that takes the city preference away and leaves everybody else on equal footing.
Totally agree. My point is, I don't know who's right, who's wrong, and I'm asking simply if we.
There's no harm done to the other applications by allowing Invictus to go forward. If they are not eligible, then all of the other ones that are eligible will be in that same position. Lift Orlando, for instance, is one of those.
Right.
And we have let Lift Orlando know that this is our preference moving forward, this particular project.
Got it, got it. Okay, let's, we've got a lot of confidence in you.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now we will move to the CRA vote. Kyle, did that okay without like adjourning and stuff?
You probably ought to adjourn the city council and reconvene the CRA.
Okay, then let's, let's adjourn the city council meeting. No, let's not adjourn it. Let's recess the city council meeting, just in case I need to call it back. And let's reconvene without objection, the CRA make the meeting for the purpose of accepting the same motion on behalf of the CRA. Commissioner. Take Commissioner Hill as a motion. Commissioner Ainge, second.
Mayor, I would just suggest that you ask the clerk to incorporate all the testimony that you heard in front of the city council in front of the CRA minutes.
Well, okay, do that as an abundance of caution, but I think what we did was we had both the city meeting and the CRA meeting open at the same time, so it should be on both of the minutes of those, but to the extent you think, we'll put the suspenders on as well. Make sure that the testimony that just occurred in the last hearing is applicable to both the city and the CRA. Okay, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so it passes yeas damnously. Madam Clerk, is there any further business? Do we have any general appearances?
No, I think Jose went home. So other than, he was our only general appearance.
Okay, then we will adjourn the CRA meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting, and we will adjourn the city council meeting without objection. All right, this is our longest one in a while. Thank you very much for your patience.